Are you ready? Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Indian River County's College Game Day. Today, we join the Indian River County School District in celebrating all of our local student athletes and especially honor those signing letters of intent to pursue academic and athletic excellence at the collegiate level through the NCAA National Collegiate Athletic Association. Let's introduce our team. Representing Marine Bank from Pelican Island University and the official mascot of Indian River County Game Day, let's welcome Mariner Pete. Representing the county administrator's office and over 900 county employees sporting the blue and orange of the University of Florida Gators, the county administrator downtown, Jason Brown. Representing the county attorney's office and its employees wearing the buff and blue of the George Washington University Colonials, the county attorney and George Washington, Dylan Rangel. And now, the starting lineup for your Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District 5 for Indian River County and wearing the blue and orange of the Florida Gators, please welcome Commissioner Laura Moss. Representing District 1 for Indian River County and donning the garnet and gold of the Florida State University Seminoles, let's hear it for Commissioner Susan "The Real Deal" Adams. Representing District 4 for Indian River County and sporting the green and orange of the University of Miami Hurricanes, get on your feet for the chairman of the board, Commissioner Peter O'Brien. It's all about the U. Representing District 3 of Indian River County, also wearing the garnet and gold of Florida State University, let's hear for the vice chairman, the skipper, Commissioner Joe Irman. Now representing District 2 for Indian River County and donning the blue and blue gray of the United States Air Force Academy, ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for the commissioner, Joltin' Joe Fletcher. All right, go team. All right, we have a couple more community partners we want to recognize coming in. So, from the city of Vera Beach, Mayor Robbie Brackett, Ray Neville, and Bob McCabe. And then finally, our partners in this special day, we'd like to acknowledge and recognize the school district of Indian River County, and we have Dr. Moore and several of his staff members, so welcome the school district of Indian River County. All right. You can all be seated?
We have to do something professional, yeah, finally.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here for College Game Day. We will call this meeting to order, if you can call any of this, any kind of order whatsoever. At this point, it's my pleasure to invite Dr. Christina Moore up to one of the podiums. She'll be presenting the invocation this morning. I don't see Dr. Moore yet. Is she? Okay, all right, Dr. Moore. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by county administrator Jason Brown. And we will begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces. Would everyone please rise?
Good morning, good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity to give the invocation. Hallelujah. Father, we thank you in the name of Jesus Christ and as we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your loving kindness. Father, have your way in our hearts, in our mind, in our soul. We thank you for lifting up a standard of peace against a flood of confusion and chaos. We thank you for lifting up a standard of prosperity against a flood of poverty. We thank you for lifting up a standard of abundance and all that is good against a flood of lack. God, we thank you right now for lifting up a standard of healing against the spirit of infirmity that which come to steal, kill, and destroy. Arise, oh God, let the enemies of our soul, let the enemies of our spirit be scattered, God. We thank you, God, for doing exceedingly abundantly above all we can think and ask for. We decree and declare in the name of Jesus, increase and overflow and all that in good. We decree and declare prosperity, we decree and declare crooked paths made straight, ooh glory, rough places made smooth, God. You're all seeing, you're all knowing, and you're all nipping, and all power and dominion belong to you. And we thank you, God, for opening up uncommon doors, we thank you for divine favor, divine network connections, God, that'll bring us into a prosperous place as a person, as an individual, as a city, as a town, and as a nation. And God, we forever can forgive you all the glory, all the honor, power, and dominion that's due unto you in Jesus Christ's name, amen, and it is so.
Amen. Everyone, please face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Commissioners on the agenda, would like to move the county attorney item 13B to the constitutional officer, so we'll move 13B to become 9C to go along with the sheriff items. Also, 13B, some additional backup was provided by the county attorney, hopefully you all have received that. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
This chair move approval is amended.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero. That takes us to presentations and proclamations. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce and to welcome the Sebastian River High School Marching Pep Band. All right, go band. I tell you what, if you don't have your blood flowing yet, that would've done it right there. At this time, I'd like to, let me get my list here, get organized. Like to invite Coach Terry Amy from Sebastian River High School, the athletic director, and she is going to make the student presentation for Sebastian River. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here on Game Day for this exciting thing and great job, band. I would like to introduce our athlete, Mitchell Ledford. He has committed to North Carolina State. He's also going to be an early graduate. He is also graduating in December. Mitchell has been an All-Star swimmer for our school for a number of years. He is the 2021 state champion in the 100-meter butterfly, and he was also competed at the Olympic Trials this summer in the 100-meter butterfly as well, Mitchell Ledford. We also have his coach, Scott Barlow, over here as well.
Would either of you like to say a word real quick, or?
It's really nice to be here, being recognized with other athletes, it's really nice. A lot of us put in a lot of work that other people don't see, so to be recognized for all that work that we do is really nice, and it's just really nice being with other athletes, I guess.
Very good. Well, we're very proud of you and all the others that are here today, and congratulate you. Coach, would you like to say a word, Coach? Coach?
I'd just like to say a few words in behalf of Mitchell. Thank you, everybody here this morning, it's a really great setup, hopefully a tradition that will always continue. It's been my honor to coach Mitchell over the last 10 years, basically, since he's been six years old, he's been with our club team, and he's our captain of our high school team this year, he's a senior. He's been a state qualifier and a state finalist every year that he swam. He's also a two-time All-American. Our swim team has had a rich history of success, he's been a huge part of that as well, and it's been an honor coaching him, and I want the best for him. Obviously, he's moving on, and hopefully he'll hold on to his memories here in Indian River County and being part of the Sebastian River High School team, so we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Very good job. We have a couple students here from St. Ed's, and St. Ed's doesn't have a band, so I've asked the Sebastian High School band to kind of unofficially adopt them for this morning, so we appreciate that. So first, let me call up Ricky Savage. Ricky, come to one of the podiums, please. Ricky, just tell us your sport, your position, what college you're looking at, and anything you'd like to tell us.
I'm Ricky Savage, I play lacrosse at St. Ed's, I'm a midfielder, and I'm committed to Loyola University. I'm excited to play at the highest level possible and also go into the business field starting in Loyola.
Very good, congratulations. And we'd like to call up your, I believe, your teammate Ford Norris. Come on up, Ford.
Hi, my name's Ford Norris, I'm Ricky Savage's teammate, I'm an attack man at St. Ed's, and I'm committed to Manhattan College in the Bronx of New York City, and I'm excited to start studying marketing side of business in a minor in music.
Awesome, very good. I think Ford just made his commitment last night, is that correct, Ford? So, there you go. He probably heard what was going on, said, "I better commit quick so I can be part of this," right? Yes, sir.
Morning. Thank you for this, this is really cool for the student athletes in Indian River County. My name is Doug Bailey, I'm the lacrosse coach at St. Edward's School, and I would just want to congratulate both Ricky and Ford on their commitments. As we've talked about before, there's nothing better than going to college with your family already intact as a team, and I'm excited for them, and they're two outstanding students and student athletes, and it's just wonderful to see this opportunity for them today. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, Sebastian River High School Marching Pep Band, march on! A better big hand for Sebastian River Marching Pep Band. All right, and now it is my pleasure also to introduce the Vera Beach High School Marching Pep Band. All right, Vera Drum Major, Vera Drum Major, could you have, like, from the two of us to these guys, get back in front of us right here so we're not blocking everybody up front? Just move them right here in front of us. So you guys, you guys here, come around this way. Yeah, come on. That's good. The trombones and all that, yep. So stop right there, you stop there. Okay, next guy, come on, come on, come on. Close enough. No, 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 not everybody, you're good, the rest of you are good. I know, you know, I walked them through earlier, I don't know. Okay, now we got the band organized. At this point, it's my pleasure to invite Coach Lennecowski from Vera Beach High School, the athletic director, and he'll be introducing the Vera players. Coach?
Again, thank you guys for the invite and having us, and this is a great event. My name's Lenny Jankowski, I have the, you know, the honor to be the athletic director here at Vera Beach High School, and we have 11 student athletes that we're going to recognize today, most of which are here, some had some, a couple conflicts with testing, but we're going to recognize those girl and boy athletes. And again, this is fairly early in the school year, and I was talking to Coach Amy prior to the start, and we'll continue to have athletes throughout the school year that, you know, will have the benefit to, you know, sign a scholarship and get a commitment to a college. So we're very proud of these young ladies and young men and for all their accomplishments. As Sebastian Swimmer mentioned, you know, there's a lot of, lot of hard work that goes on, on the field, off the field, in the classroom, on the court, in the pool, and all of what these young student athletes are involved with. So, again, congrats to all and all athletes in the future. But first, we're going to mention our boys and girls, our boys golfers, we have two golfers that neither could be here tonight, or today, but have bright futures ahead of them. One is the state champ, James Hassel, and he's committed to University of South Florida in Tampa. And then, also, we have Jackson Hiller. Congrats to James. And then we have Jackson Hiller, who's also a big member of our boys golf team and is committed recently to Oglethorpe University in Brookhaven, Georgia. So that's Jackson Hiller.
Coach, if I could interrupt just a second, it's my understanding that both of those gentlemen came up through our Sand Ridge Junior Golf League program, is that correct?
Yes, and that's, that was, from what I understand, started by Roger Van Dyke and Bellinaggy out there at Sand Ridge, and those, those young men have, you know, been homegrown here and, you know, continue to improve, and that's where they, where it all got started, so.
And I think the best thing is they probably didn't take any golf tips from me either, so.
Likewise. All right, next, we've got, we've got four football players here and, and four commitments. I'll start with a 2024 commitment, he's a quarterback, he's committed recently to SMU in Dallas, Texas, and it's Tyler Aronson. Stand up, Tyler. And then these next three guys are all rising, or the current seniors in class of 2023. First, we have Keyshawn Campbell, and he's committed to Troy University in Troy, Alabama. Next, we have Nate Gwynn, and Nate is a tight end, and he's recently committed to the University of Illinois in Champaign, Illinois. And next, we have Vandravious Jacobs, he's a wide receiver, and he's committed to Florida State University in Tallahassee, Florida. All right, next, we have a baseball player, and he's a pitcher, and his name is Blake Holzhouser, and he's committed to Erskine College in South Carolina, Duesworth, South Carolina. We also have two girls lacrosse commits, one is here with us today and one is at a doctor's appointment, but the first, we have Kerrigan Gilmore, and she's committed to University of South Florida in Tampa, Florida. And we also have Alexa Vega, who's committed to Stony Brook University in New York. We have an indoor volleyball commitment, Madison Gravely, who's committed to the University of Florida in Florida. And then a relatively new sport on the scene, we were, in addition, I should mention before I, before I announce Katie Dalton, that all these, all these student athletes are, in addition to being great individual athletes, have had lots of success as teams, and our girls, our girls lacrosse team, they were state runner-ups last year at state, and our beach volleyball team was also in its first year in existence, state runners-up, and Katie Dalton is a member of our beach volleyball team, and she is committed to Mercer University in Macon, Georgia. So these are some of the wonderful student athletes at Vera Beach High School. Like I said, we're extremely proud of them all, not only what they do on the field, on the court, in the pool, but also what they do in the classroom and their great representation of our school and our school district and our county. So thank you for having us here and look forward to seeing everybody soon.
Coach, thank you very much. Is there anyone else related to the teams I'd like to speak, or Coach Janikowski covered it for you? All right, with that, Vera Beach.
All right, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, one late-breaking addition to the agenda, if I could, if I could beg. So, in addition to today being College Game Day, there is also another event that is occurring today, and that is Chairman O'Brien's birthday, so while we have the band So while we have the band here, Commissioner O'Brien's not the only one that gets to pretend to be a band director. I want to pretend to be a band director and ask if we can have the high school band play, play a little song for, for Commissioner O'Brien.
I'll give you two.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we're not, we're not.
We're not done yet, okay.
We're not done yet.
Did these kids say keep us as long as possible so we don't have to go to class or something?
Yeah, that would your birthday.
Oh, okay, so we, all right. So Vera Beach High School Marching Band, march on!
Good job, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in, in honor of your birthday and sticking with College Game Day.
Hold up, Kathy, Kathy, hold up, hold up, hold up. Yeah, why don't we?
And sticking with College Game Day today, we want to honor you on your 21st birthday. So, and because you're a proud graduate of the, of the University of Miami and not the one at Ohio.
Right.
You know, we want to make sure we're clear on that. We want to bring your birthday wishes from a true legend to all fans of Hurricane Athletics. It isn't Coach Cristobal, Mario Cristobal, because he's reviewing game film for their big game against Middle Tennessee State after the loss to Texas A&amp;M. That's what he's doing. So, so I think we've got something better. And a proven national championship-winning coach. Some of you may not, may not recognize this guy, but if you're a baseball fan like me, you know who he is, and, and being that Coach Cristobal or Jimmy Johnson or, or some of the other famous coaches couldn't be here, we have the famous baseball coach from the University of Miami. Coach Morris is a three-time college national baseball coach of the year, who in a remarkable 25-year career in Coral Gables, won 1,090 games and national championships for the University of Miami in 1999 and 2001. Beyond his great success at Miami, Coach Morris also enjoyed success on the international level, serving from 1989 to 1990 as head coach of the USA Baseball Team that won the silver medal in the 89 Presidential Cup in Taiwan, and a bronze medal at the Goodwill Games. He was elected to the National College Baseball Hall of Fame in 2020, and it's my honor, Chairman O'Brien, to have this gentleman show up specifically for your birthday, and so I want to welcome distinguished coach and Indian River County resident Coach Jim Morris from the University
It's great to be here, and it's great, honored to be here on your birthday, and as chairman as you're going out, and I'm glad that me and you, it looks like we're the only one with the Miami stuff on, by the way.
All about the you, Coach, you got it.
All about the you, but it's great to be here, honored to be here. I retired four years ago at the University of Miami, I was there for, for 25 years as their head coach, as we said, and won a couple of national championships, went to the World Series 13 times, I'm proud to say out of those 25 years, and took a year off trying to decide what to do, and visited this area with COVID going on, and me and my wife, and I have a 10-year-old son, still got a little game, guys, so, 10-year-old son, and the, I guess I can say that, and so it's my first kid, and we're trying to figure out what would be a great place to raise my son, and we came to the conclusion that Vera Beach would be a great place, so.
Awesome, yeah.
I was up here two years ago, and, and he was playing tennis and golf, and to my delight, one day he came to me and said, you think I could try out for Little League Baseball? And before that time, he said, I hate baseball. Played professionally, I coached my whole life, Georgia Tech and Miami, so, yeah, I thought I was going to have a heart attack today, he said that. It's also great to be here with Rick Hatcher, the president, the director of the Hall of Fame and director of tourism, who's been a friend for 40 years, and a Seminole, but I understand the importance of this commission, and I appreciate everything you do, I know you, you work very hard. I've actually, last couple of days, committed to help the Little League program and, on their board and as a coach, so, you know, I've had 20, 20, I've had 40 years actually of college coaching, telling 20-year-olds what to do, and now I got a 10-year-old telling me what to do. So I'm getting involved in a Little League Baseball program to give back to baseball, and I hope that you guys in the committee in here will help Little League Baseball here. I know it's been a program, I bet you, a lot of people in here have said I played Little League Baseball, and it's, it's great to be involved in that and doing all the things we've got to do to make Michael's Field and the Little League Program very good. My son in his second year playing baseball ever actually made the All-Star team, hit 719, gonna brag a little bit on him here, and, and played and missed the state finals but, but won a game. But I want to congratulate the commissioner for his 16 years of service, brought you a couple of things here, and really appreciate your help and everyone's help, and share flowers, I'll see you back here, want to thank you and the police force, all you, things you guys do for the community, being very, I was very involved in the, the police force and, as a helper in Miami, and hope to be here in this area too, so volunteered and a lot of stuff, and retired, but congratulations, Peter O'Brien, and I got a couple of things here if I could give to you, and go Canes, and go Little League Baseball.
Coach, one thing, so you've got a lot of years' experience coaching college kids, I'm sure there's certain things that apply to all sports, so any word of advice you could give to our, our student athletes here before they make that next step and take that journey to college, any kind of words of wisdom you could pass on to them to help them in their college career?
Well, first of all, they got a great leader in Lenny, and Lenny's a Miami guy, so I like that, and three of his assistants played at the University of Miami, and two of the baseball coaches are Miami guys, so you got great leadership right here, and I get to see that and had a chance to meet it, and want to wish you guys luck, I know you're doing well in school, and you're having great years, and, and, you know, it's amazing, I pick up the Indian River paper, and I pick it up every morning, first thing I do is get a cup of coffee, and walk my dogs now as a retired citizen here, and read the newspaper, read all about you guys. I don't read much about Miami, University of Miami.
We don't get much coverage, Coach.
Gators and Seminoles, but I guess that's okay, but just be your best every day when you look in the mirror, when you go to bed at night, look in the mirror and say, I did my best that day, you guys got some great opportunities, and athletes don't realize that maybe 10 years after they get out of college, what it meant to them, what they have in the start of life, so do the best you can do, and I hope you do well, I'll keep up with you, and I keep with you, up with you every day, I read the paper every day, and this paper does a great job of covering high school athletics, and it's fun for me to be able to watch it, and if there's anybody in the newspaper, I appreciate that, and just all the support we see here, it's a unique day to, to see all the Gators and Seminoles and everybody else here together, rooting together, and we're rooting together for the kids, and, and I appreciate that, and I'd like to present.
Yeah, Coach, I'll come on down there.
Couple of things here. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I hope to see you at Bobby's or somewhere, isn't that the sports place?
Coach, thank you again.
Good luck.
If I could, I'd like to take just one minute for a personal story. In high school, I played football, and my freshman year of college, I went to a very, very small school called Center College in Danville, Kentucky. Now you kids, the divisions were different back there, you had Division One, Division Two, you know, 2A, 2B, and all that stuff. Well, this college was probably about like Division 12 doubles, you know, Z. It was non-scholarship and such, and I remember one practice up there doing push-ups in the morning, there's frost on the ground, and I'm thinking, what is a Florida boy doing up here in this cold weather? Well, we had a, a home game one November Saturday, and it was one of those picture-perfect days, there was a blue sky, just cool enough where the air was crisp, you know, but it wasn't cold, and I'm standing there on the sideline, and we're playing the National Anthem, and I thought, dang, here I am, I'm standing on the sideline of a college football game, and I'm geared up and ready to play, and I grew up watching ABC's Wild War of Sports with Keith Jackson, and I thought, yeah, we might be, you know, Division 12 and whatnot, but you know what, dang it, it's college football, and I'm playing, and that, that meant a lot to me. So for you kids going on, you'll recognize that for your first time. Thank you. So now, if we could have all the students come up and stand in front of the dice here and look out towards the audience, we have a proclamation to read, and then I think we have just a couple more speakers real quick, and then we've got some goodie bags and stuff, some swag stuff for you guys to take with you. That's perfect. Made sure I put the tall volleyball player in front of Commissioner Irman here. All right, this is the proclamation for College Game Day in Indian River County, September 20, 2022. Whereas, high school sports have always been a prominent feature in the community of Indian River County, and whereas, Indian River County residents are proud of the athletic and academic successes of all of our students, and whereas, fall brings the beginning of the school year and the start of the football season, bringing about excitement and energy to the community, and whereas, some Indian River County student athletes will be continuing their athletic career in college by committing to or signing letters of intent with colleges around the country, and whereas, the school district of Indian River County is supporting their student athletes that are continuing their careers at college by encouraging all district staff and students to wear their favorite college shirt or jersey on September 20th in support. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board proclaims Tuesday, September 20th, as College Game Day in Indian River County, and the Board further proclaims that all Indian River residents should join the school district of Indian River County by wearing their favorite college shirt or jersey to support our student athletes that are continuing their careers at college. Adopted this 20th day of September, signed and sealed by all five county commissioners. So at this point, Dr. Moore, did you wish that, say a word?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Brien and Board members. If today doesn't speak about community to you, then I, I don't know what does. And the reality is, if you look across the country, the bands of this size no longer exist. The sports programs that offer every single sport, every single season are dwindling away. But here in this school district and the leadership of our board member, we have two board members here, Doc Jones, who is our vice chair, Ms. Rosario, board member, strong commitment to continuing to grow these programs. And Commissioner, you said, the impact of these programs is extremely important, it creates the discipline, the ability to go on and go on and continue to work hard. So this is special to Indian River County, the commitment to continue to grow these extracurricular activities is something we will continue to do. Each and every single one of you, and you just represent hundreds of other children who are yet to sign, go and do great things. Represent this county, everything this county stands for, go and have the best time of your life, because if you're going to Florida State, where's, where's a Seminole? Thank you, sir. You will have the best time of, of your, of your life. Go out, learn, and then come back to this community, because what a great place this is. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think we had either Kenny Holmes or Dale Dawkins here, they, Kenny, you want to say a word?
Dale.
Oh, Dale, yeah, come on up, Dale.
Again, just want to piggyback on, Dr. Moore said, thank you for having me to give an opportunity to address these guys from one student athlete to the next. Guys, one thing I love about this community is that when I came through and signed my letter of intent to go and play at the University of Miami, I knew this was a family, I knew I had the support of this community, and I want you to know that you have that same support. Again, you're going to meet lots of different challenges, the path that's ahead of you is not an easy path, all right? It's going to take everything you have, and I want you to understand, the time is going to go by very quickly, okay? So don't waste a day, don't waste a moment of it, because it's critical, okay? So know you're supposed to be there, you're supposed to be there. They would not have taken interest in you if you didn't have the physical ability to be there. That's first and foremost, you have to know that. I'm supposed to be here, okay, on this level, and from there, guys, you might be able to do what me and a few of these other guys was able to do, hit that top, top level, where you can say, I was there with the best. But it takes every ounce of everything that's in you. Mom and dad won't be there. Everything falls on your shoulders right now, this is when you really grow up. I'll never forget one story, so you wide receivers, you know, I was a quarterback that came through here, one of the last black quarterbacks for the past 30 years that ever came through Vera Beach. So when I went down to the University of Miami, the greatest school ever. Had to put that out there, you know, just does something to me being in amongst all these Gators and FSU fans, just, just comes out of you. But it is, it's the, it's the, it's the best time of your life, man, you're going to meet your friends for a lifetime, and I can remember Jimmy Johnson at that time standing over me because I had to switch positions from quarterback to wide receiver, and I wasn't very good at it at the time. I wasn't very good at it, but I knew I was supposed to be there. And I can remember a guy by the name of Tim Sim slammed me to the ground so hard that Jimmy Johnson walked over and looked down at me and said, son, I don't think you're going to make it here. My head coach said that to me. So you're going to hear things like that, that's challenge you, to challenge your integrity, to challenge your strength, but like Coach said, you got great coaching, you off to a great start, you got a great supporting cast of community members here, so again, I'll say to you, no, you're supposed to be there, and represent this great community like so many of us have gone on and do. We believe in you, we love you, and we're always there for you. Thank you for letting me have the shot.
But just, so you know, the rest of that story that Dale just said, he went on to complete his college career at UM and went on to play professional football, so Dale didn't let a little adversity slow him down in his career, it, it just made him stronger and tougher and gave him the resolve to, to keep going. So Dale, congratulations to you on a great career. All right, so kids, I know you're probably thinking, okay, I can't wait to get back to class, so we're going to wrap this up here pretty quick. Dale, did you want to come up and get a picture with the kids? And we'll get a couple pictures here. And we'll get a couple pictures here. And then, kids, we'll do the grab swag bags, and we'll take a break. And if anybody wants individual pictures or anything like that, we can do that during the break. But let's go ahead, and we'll get the commissioners down here and get a group picture.[610.82][610.82][laughter] All right. All right, students, if you could face me just real quick. Like I said, we've got some goodies for you. So the city of Vero Beach has this bag for you. It's got a city hat in there and kind of a cool shirt from their police department. It says, "I've got your six." And what that means in police talk is, "I've got your back," okay? So you know that the city of Vero Beach is behind you guys and supporting you. If the shirt isn't the right size, just go by City Hall, they'll switch it out and get you the right one.[672.38][672.38][laughter] Our rec department put together a whole basket of stuff. I think a really cool Indian River County hat, so I'm real happy with that. And then there's passes in there for our golf driving range for the golfers, we'll really use those, and also a pass to the aquatic center up in North County. And if you really want to stretch your stuff, some really cool sunglasses.[696.38][696.38][laughter]
Yeah. At this point, they want to go back to class with you wearing those sunglasses.[702.02][702.02][laughter]
And then finally, we had the chairman's lovely wife, Susan, made this logo for the backpacks, Indian River grown, so we want you to remember your roots and where you came from. And then we had a couple corporate sponsors that stepped up. Marine Bank, you see Mariner Peak there.[724.66][724.66][applause] Your backpack has a $50 gift card in it from Marine Bank, so thank you, Marine Bank, our corporate sponsor. Waste Management also contributed. And your backpack will be a $20 gift card for Dunkin' Donuts, not Dunkin', excuse me, Chick-fil-A. Now, one thing about the Chick-fil-A card, they don't take it on college campuses. Go figure, right? So use it here before you go to college, because they don't take it on college campuses. And then finally, our Indian River Chamber, and where is Dory Stone? Okay, turn around and look at Dory in the back there. She has shirts for you guys in all sizes. Again, sticking with our Indian River grown, we have Visit Indian River, it's got Indian River on the sleeve, and then a Friendly Pineapple on the back. So see Dory, she's got all different sizes, so she'll get you guys all set up and hooked up for your shirt there, okay? Just want to say we're proud of you all and hope you all have a great career. Thank you for being here for today. I hope you enjoyed it, because we're here kind of celebrating you all. And with that, we're going to take a break and kind of clear things up and let you guys get your goodie bags and get organized and all that. But again, how about one big round of applause for all these kids?[808.54][808.54][applause] All right. Board, that's yours. All right, so students, go ahead, see Mariner Peak, get your goodie bags, and get on your bus, and we're good. And we're going to take about a 15-minute break. We'll be back at 10:15. Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Have a great year. Congratulations, man. Thank you.[842.50][842.50][laughter] Hey, Bill, Bill, make sure they get all the bags. Bill?
You have the white one, too.
The white one. Grab a white one.
All right, we will call this meeting back to order. We have finished with the College Game Day proclamation. We know, kind of, maybe. Introduction of Andrea Lozari. Andrea, good morning and welcome.
And good morning Commissioners Phil Matson, Community Development Director. So consecutively, you've just heard from an Olympic hopeful, a national championship NCAA coach, and an NFL star, and I'm Phil Matson. Truly, this is a memorable day. Andrea's first question, I'm introducing Andrea Lozari, our new agricultural extension agent for the county. We're delighted to have her here, and her first question was, is this unusual for a county commission meeting? And I told her, no, not at all. And Andrea, although she's young, she's got six years of experience with the 4-H agent program and the University of Florida IFAS Extension of Brevard County. So she comes to us with quite a background. She's managed thirty-plus volunteers, done youth development programming, over forty thousand youths focusing on science, agricultural, and healthy living. She has a master's in environmental and education, and bachelor's in zoology and fisheries, all from Michigan State. So she's wearing the green here.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Goodness.
And, you know, our longtime agent, we said goodbye to with a heavy heart, Christine Kelly Brigazzo. Difficult job. Christine grew the job in a lot of different directions, managed the transition of our agricultural industries very, very well, was a great bonus to our visioning program where we tried to look at what's next for our Western lands. And I think Andrea picks right up where Christine left off in that regard, and we've been working closely on these things, and I'm just really delighted to have her. So if you'd like to say a few words?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to welcome me to Indian River County. I'm really excited to be here. Unfortunately, I did not bring my own marching band, so I apologize for that. Maybe next time. Next time, yeah. So as you all know, Indian River County has a rich agricultural history, and I'm looking forward to continuing to support our local agricultural producers. And in addition to that, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to work with the residents of Indian River County to foster an appreciation for and an understanding of our local agriculture and all of our wonderful natural resources. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'm excited to work with you all.
Very good. Well, welcome, and we look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. I'd like to take just a minute. You know, we had a lot of festivities this morning. I'd like to thank a couple people who helped make that happen. One, Kathy Copeland, our Public Information Officer. She helped coordinate with the school district and arrange a lot of things. And then, most importantly, our Public Works Director, Rich Spierka. Rich was the one that procured the confetti cannons. He test-fired them. He got the confetti, and he was kind of my co-conspirator on all this. And I really want to thank Rich for all the work he's done on this. And he says he's looking for uses for those confetti cannons, so if anybody needs one, Rich is ready.
I can think of...
Now, I look at you, Commissioner Adams.
I know, you're looking at me, but I can think of multiple uses that we, and events we could... But I would like to thank the facilities guys who had to clean up the mess. Maybe we should consult with them the next time we want to use it.
All right, well, Rich, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your work on this. All right, Commissioners, there's no minutes to approve under informational items. We do have a proclamation honoring Bruce Goodwin on his retirement after forty-one years of public service with the Property Appraiser's Office. So Bruce, thank you for your forty-one years of service, and hope you enjoy your retirement. And then, is Sue Flack still here? Oh, there's Sue. I'd like to have Sue come up. We have a Recycle Florida Today 2022 Award in River County. And Sue, tell us about our award.
So, yes, it's a big award. There were three counties in the running, and we won the Sustainability, Environmental Sustainability Award from Recycle Florida Today. It is a national award, so we did get national recognition here in Indian River County, and we're very proud of our community fridge, which is what we won the award for, which is still up and running. Why don't you win? Say a few words.
Commissioners, I'm Anshametha, Managing Director, and just so proud of Sue and Jill for all their hard work on the community fridge program and all our community partners. And it's great to be recognized, you know, nationally with what we've done here locally. So, thank you so much.
And why don't you just let me, you know, squash any rumors right now. Just because your office is out near the landfill has nothing to do with how you look right now, right?
That's right.
Wow.
There are no words.
There are no words.
That's awesome, that's all I know.
Well, Sue, congratulations. I know that that community fridge was one of your bucket list, deep-in-your-heart projects. I'm glad that it got recognized nationally, and glad to hear it's still up and running and doing good, so...
Yes, just to give you an example, so we were there Monday late afternoon stacking the fridge, and a gentleman came up, and he said, he was so excited, and he helped us unload the material and put it in the fridge room, and he said, "I just want to thank you so much." He said, "I come here a lot, and it's empty, and I'm so grateful that I came here today to help you, and that it's full, that I can take it for my family," because his daughter just passed away last month and left him and his wife, the grandparents with four children, one of which has Tourette's. So he was so grateful. I said, "Take whatever you want." So it's very near and dear.
Very good. Glad to hear that. Well, congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations, very much.
Very proud, yeah, thanks.
I don't need to...
All right, moving to consent agenda. Commissioners, would anyone like to pull a consent agenda item for additional discussion? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a consent agenda item pulled for additional discussion? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. We now turn to constitutional officers. We have a couple items here with the sheriff. The first is, I get some discussion on false alarms, adult arcades, sober homes, addiction facilities, and residency restrictions for sexual offenders. Good morning and welcome, Sheriff.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you so much for making time for these very important items. We actually have three items to talk about. Nine A is, actually contains four different requests. Nine B is going to be a request to spend proceeds from an auction on sex offender, the sex offender fees and our auction fees, spending that money. And then, the third item was brought by the county attorney into my matters relating to pre-trial services. So, starting out with nine A, the first item on there is false alarms. Our current false alarm ordinance has been in place for a number of years, and as you can imagine, the problems we were having years ago with false alarms were different than today. Now, people have their own alarm systems that they personally monitor. It's no longer these major corporations. I mean, they still exist, and there are still places that have them, and houses that have them, and businesses that have them. But before, we were dealing with ten thousand, thirteen thousand false alarm calls a year, and now we deal with about eleven hundred, twelve hundred a year. And so, we need some changes to the false alarm ordinance. My ask today on that particular one is that you direct the county attorney's office to work with our legal staff to bring that particular code up to speed for the modern era to address our needs as they stand today. The second item that I'd like to talk about is for residency restrictions for sexual offenders. In working with the state attorney's office, we have found that there are some challenges with that ordinance, that some of the definitions are not up to our needs, and we believe that there's a way to tighten that ordinance up, that we can better make charges against offenders that are violating that particular county ordinance. Right now, we've had some challenges where we felt they violated that ordinance, but we weren't able to actually make a case, and that's due to some of the language. I don't think that when it was put in place that there was enough definition as to certain terms, and Detective Sanders is here if you have specific questions on it, but she's been working with the county attorney. She's talked to the county attorney already, and with Ryan Butler and the state attorney's office. So we'd like to really address that so that we can hold our sex offenders' feet to the fire in those cases. So, again, I'm asking that you direct the county attorney's office to work with us to tighten that up. And again, those two items will have to come back for a vote, of course, to correct what we believe needs to happen in those ordinances. The other two ordinances that I'm asking for, I'll start with sober homes. George Cologne is here, he could speak more on this. I know Commissioner Moss has brought this to my attention, but we've started to see some sober homes move into Indian River County. There's been some challenges with that. We currently do not have an ordinance around that, and, again, we'd ask that you have us work with the county attorney's office to determine if there's a need and if there's an avenue to place an ordinance on sober homes. The last item, which is something that I'm really passionate about, I know that all of our folks in Indian River County are seeing these adult arcades pop up everywhere. Any strip mall, any old building, they turned a Burger King into one of these things. And other counties have been successful with their ordinances against these adult arcades. When they first came to town, you know, there's a lot of residents that enjoy going there. I think a lot of those residents have stopped going there because they've become drug havens, drug dens. In the evening hours when they're open, you know, 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m., our folks are constantly stopping people coming out of there with warrants, with drugs, and they've really become a blight on our community. And so, the last item that I'm asking that you direct the county attorney's office to work with us on is drafting an ordinance, because right now, we do not have one about adult arcades, giving us the ability to take some enforcement action on them, or if it's the will of the commission to outright ban them. So those are my four items under nine A. I hope that I can gain your support, and that you will direct the county attorney to work with us on those four items and come back to you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions to the sheriff on this item?
I have questions.
Sheriff Adams.
For the false alarm ordinance, what changes are you proposing? Because I'd like to understand that before we give direction to the...
Sure. There's currently a provision inside of the false alarm ordinance that requires us to maintain a board that has enforcement authority to provide penalties. So when people have these false alarms, they have to come in, and they have to sit through a training class, and the whole goal was absolutely in the right place. When they put it in place was to reduce the number of false alarms that occurred in Indian River County. And what ultimately happened is the ordinance worked. Not only did it work, but then technology changed too. And so, the ordinance is very antiquated in that it directly speaks to the way that the old system worked with like ADT, that company, where they would call us, and if we had a false alarm, after so many false alarms, they would be fined, and then eventually they'd have to come in for a training class, and the board would make decisions about, we're going to overrule this, we're going to give them a training, or we're going to, you know, add this fine or this. It's really not necessary in 2020 because we don't even have enough of these to convene a board. We feel like the penalties are probably right, even though inflation and things have happened. The number of problems continues to go down, and so we're really not in compliance with it, and so I'd rather get what we're currently doing in compliance with the law that was put in place by a former commission, and just make sure that we're doing it properly.
So basically, just taking that reference to the board out?
The board needs to come out. A lot of the language needs to be updated. It's very simple changes.
Okay. And then, regarding the adult arcades, it's my understanding that a lot of the local adult arcades are handing out money, and they're supposed to be handing out gift cards or non-monetary whatever.
Yes.
Is there, is there something that precludes you guys from enforcing that aspect of the statute currently?
There isn't. I, on this platform, don't want to get into everything that we're doing about that. However, I will tell you that the number of arcades has certainly outpaced the number of detectives that I have to work on that type of investigation. And at some point, you have to ask yourself too, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze when you're dealing with so many of these? When we have so many other challenges, I have limited staff, so I think that ordinance would probably be a better way to deal with this. Enforcement is certainly something that we're working on, and it's certainly something that we can do, but I think there's an avenue, and other counties have been very successful with an ordinance.
Okay. I was just curious, because I was, I thought, you know, you guys have been enforcing that with some of them as far as some of the drug activity. I mean, at least we've seen that on Facebook and in the paper. So I was just curious what you were going for there.
Our narcotics team has absolutely been working on that. There are places where drug dealers are setting up shop, and we know that, and we're working on that. But I think there's a better way to handle this.
Okay. And then, my last question is regarding sober homes. Sorry, I have so many questions. I drank a lot of coffee this morning. So with sober homes, I know they're moving in, but Dylan, my understanding is whatever we might do to regulate those, we would have to be somewhat careful not to run afoul of some discrimination issues and that type of thing, so we might be somewhat limited in what we can or cannot do.
And I actually really appreciate that comment from Commissioner Adams. Now, there are ADA and fair housing protections for sober homes. Some local governments have gotten themselves in trouble with the regulations, so what I see is what the sheriff has asked for today is simply to allow me to work with the sheriff, figure out what we can do, what sort of goes beyond the bounds. I can tell you, about four years ago, I brought this item to the board. There was a lot of activity that was happening on our neighbors' border, on our borders, in our neighboring communities such as Port St. Lucie. That issue has sort of died down for a little bit, for a while, so we weren't as aggressive moving forward. But I think based upon the sheriff's comment, I think it's important to go back to where we were at that point in the research and move forward working together on the issue.
Thank you. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
I had a similar concern. I guess the good news now, though, Dylan, is probably enough counties and cities have passed ordinances that we might have a handful of things to look at that have kind of passed muster, so to speak.
Oh, absolutely. There are some very important models that we can use to use as templates for what we could do here, and certainly looking, if it's the boards intent, looking forward to working with the sheriff's office on working on those issues.
Well, I have no issue on the four requests, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sheriff.
Commissioner Moss.
I want to thank the sheriff for bringing all of these matters forward. I think they're all important, and especially the sober homes. And I don't know if the other issues came out of the Citizens Advisory Board that you put together, but I want to thank you for that. And Mr. Cologne brought it to my attention as a result of his service. And Mr. Cologne brought it to my attention as a result of his service on the board. And definitely, we need to address these issues to the extent that we are able to. I know that there are limitations. And I also want to thank you for making your deputies available. There is a, and this is for the entire community, since you're here, take the opportunity. But there is a substance abuse awareness town hall, which will be held a week from today. It's next Tuesday at the Heritage Center. And on that panel is a member, deputy from the sheriff's office, who has a great familiarity with that area. Also, the municipal police department, Sebastian Police Department, and Vero Beach Police Department, and a pediatrician to explain the problems of drug abuse with our young people. We need to protect them. They were all here today, and they were wonderful. And we need to be able to raise up the others, you know, and to help them when they need help. I'll be the moderator for that panel, so that's why I mentioned it. It's a week from today, the Heritage Center, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So thank you for all you're doing for the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Irvin.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You all answered one of my questions about whether we had models from other counties or communities that have dealt with the arcade thing, because I can, I assure you, I probably agree with you. I'm sure it's a definite situation. The next thing would be on the alarm ordinance. What about fire alarms and things like that? Would this be covered, if we do make a change, would this be covered under that also?
No, this is specific to burglar alarms, like house or business burglar alarms that we administer. We have a team at the sheriff's office. We receive fees and funds associated with those. Nothing with fire alarm, nothing on that side of it.
Yeah, well, I saw Chief Johnson here earlier. It don't seem now. But Dylan, I would say that we would at least have to ask that question, did fire alarms apply too?
Yeah, looking at the alarm ordinance, it does appear that it's focused on the law enforcement issue.
It'd be worth looking at both at this time to see if we're having an issue with that the same way. All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Ms. Fletcher.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sheriff, as you're probably aware, that I was part of that antiquated alarm ordinance. I served on the board. I was part of the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And it did serve well for its time with different technology. So, but with new technology, this is our new alarm board to the home. And I understand that. My only concern is that by elimination of a board, by elimination of a consideration for compliance, we will lose some of the things we're known for, which is response. This county has a great response to alarms. And I wouldn't want to see that altered in any way, shape, or form. It's what makes this place a lot different than other places.
Sure, without a doubt. And the intention of this is in no way to reduce our response. We're going to continue to respond to every alarm call that comes out. Ultimately, what happened is we went so strong on the penalties and the rules of having a false alarm, when in 2022, false alarms are much less. The technology is greater. It's just not necessary in 2022 to have this big ordinance when it's not, excuse me, when it's really not that big of a problem.
So you'd like to clean up the language and make it a brief document?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
But still have the same type of response?
Still responding to the alarm. We're still showing up every single time. And if it's a false alarm, that's fine. You know, we're still going to come out. We're still going to do our job. We just don't want people bogged down with their day when they're busy dealing with the administrative bureaucratic side of an alarm, when there are so few of them anymore.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Move the sheriff's request that the county attorney review and work with the sheriff's office on all of the requested ordinances and anything that is attached to discussion therein.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Vice Chair Irman. All in favor, signify with aye. Is there anyone from the public wishes to comment on this motion? Yes, please come up. I apologize, sorry. Good morning. Name and address, please.
Good morning. Whitney Lehman, Executive Director, Florida Association of Recovery Residences. So I am the agency that is tasked with the oversight of sober homes in our state. I was awarded by DCF to hold recovery residents accountable to Florida Statute 397487. Substance abuse is the leading cause of death in our country for ages 14 to 85. I'm a mother of four, and I'm a grandmother, believe it or not. I am terrified for our children with the fentanyl epidemic. Sober homes are a necessity in our communities. However, there are very abusive ones out there. We have over 200 arrests at the sober home task force that I serve on in Palm Beach County. I also work with the FBI strike force. So there are definitely abusive providers out there, but there are also good ones. There are many ordinances in place, and I can get with you on the ones that are working models. There are some that are not working models based on no study being conducted in the municipality before it was enacted. But what those ordinances do is require sober homes to seek our accreditation so that we can oversee them and ensure the protection of the residents there.
That's great. So Dylan, if you could make sure, either exchange information or cards or something, and that be grateful for your help and assistance in identifying those ordinances that are working.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name is George Cologne. I'm an addiction specialist. I work in the private sector. I want to thank Flowers and all of you for giving this due consideration. And my new friend, Whitney, who also has assets in the federal agency department, and bringing awareness and clarity with this. So there's, we don't want negligence regarding this. People say they don't know the ordinance and all that. The reality is there are. Florida has implemented these things. It's up to each jurisdiction and municipality to do their due diligence to find out what they are. Some do, some don't. Not my business. I'm working with federal agencies to make sure that each municipality is aware of what these requirements or ordinances can be, for two reasons. The safety of the client going into the sober home, and the safety of the community or your constituents. And if those two things aren't important, that's problematic. And so that's where federal agencies would come in and be an assistance to Flowers and his team and others to try and bring clarity as to the problem with what's happening in our community. I've been in this community 40 years. I've been in the addiction field for 10 years. My family's, Flowers knows, many of you know, former FBI, DEA. I know the language. So people who try and skirt it or get around it, it usually doesn't work with me. And so I'm very patient, but there comes a point where federal people will be involved if we don't protect our constituents, and I mean that in a humble way. Every life matters. Every human life matters, no matter who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay. So you're none. All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero.
The sheriff just got a clarification question, just preference from the board on the four different items. I know I will be happy to work with the sheriff. We will bring items back as kind of timing and priorities and the like work. Would you like to see draft ordinances before a public hearing is set? Are there any of these that you would rather just set the public hearing and bring it? Just looking for guidance from the board.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Counsel, I believe that we need to do that. This is a work in motion. The alarm ordinance does need some tightening up, agreed. Again, it's going to be new territory on the, on the...
Adult arcades and sober homes.
Adult arcades.
Sex offender, what is the current, is existing, so.
Sex offender has to be slightly altered. I understand that. But I think two of them, and as far as the sober homes, they're going to be a little more bold. And I think that it would be probably in the best interest of the community that we serve, to the sheriff, to all of the people, that we get a chance to look at it and maybe perhaps you pass it through at an earlier stage so that we can maybe tighten it up even more, so we can deliver a perfect product.
And that gives me the direction I need. So these will come back as county attorney items, and then from there, setting public hearing with the direction of the board.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Thank you all for your support on that.
All right, Sheriff, your auction proceeds.
Yes, sir. Item number one is we held an auction to auction off surplus property and vehicles. The total net amount is $21,274. We're requesting that we use the proceeds to purchase new like-kind property within our current fiscal year pursuant to Chapter 274. Additionally, we collect fees from our sex offenders. I'm requesting $15,785 be spent to purchase software, as well as some upgrades to equipment and one of our newly renovated interview rooms for child interviews.
So moved.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by myself. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? See you none. All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero. And the third item is the pretrial contract with St. Lucie County. And Dylan, did you want to kick that off, or?
Yeah, I'll be happy to kick it off. So last year, the board entered into a contract with St. Lucie County to operate the pretrial program. The agreement expires on September 30th. St. Lucie County had sent us an updated contract with the annual cost increasing from roughly $250,000 to roughly $304,000 for the year. It's my understanding the sheriff intends to bring this program in-house starting the beginning of the year, January 1st, 2023. I let St. Lucie County know that. It wasn't my intent to catch them off guard, so I clearly wanted to keep them in the loop. Their response to that was to send me a revised, proposed interlocal agreement. They sent it to me yesterday morning. Basically, instead of having it run full, full year, it basically just runs through the end of this calendar year. There were some other minor changes that weren't really that significant. If it's the intent of the sheriff to move forward on January 1st, then I think that proposed interlocal agreement satisfies what we need to help us get through the transition period. And with that, would just simply recommend, the county attorney's office recommends that the board approve the revised interlocal agreement, and certainly the sheriff is here for any other comments or questions.
I would just mention that, you know, thank you for the partnership in the first year of that program. You guys picked up half the bill. We picked up half the bill out of our budget. And looking at this year, the increase that St. Lucie County is asking for just didn't sit well with me. I sent my team out. We went to Martin County. Martin County also had taken the program in-house down there. They did it to great success. I think they actually have a little better control over the program because it is in-house. The decisions are not made by us on pretrial services in any way whatsoever. It's still up to the judges. The judges determine who is appropriate to be on pretrial, but it would be my folks who are actually putting the ankle monitors on the offenders or going out and doing those checks. And in their staff needs, they have to create an agency to do this. St. Lucie County is doing this, and it's civilians. For me, I have people working 24/7, 365 days a year. So if we need to go out and check on somebody in the middle of the night, I have a team that's ready to do that. And so, from a cost standpoint, I think it's the fiscally conservative thing to do for our county to take this away from St. Lucie County and actually do it in-house.
Thank you. Ms. Adams.
Are you able to do this under your current budget, or is this going to require a budget amendment?
No budget amendment. I'm going to do this in-house. We're going to take a couple of positions and reallocate that are currently assigned in the jail. And then current staff that's assigned to the civil is going to be assisting as well. So I'm not planning to ask for any additional money associated with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fletcher.
Sheriff, as you stated, great partnership. When the idea came about and we moved it forward, it was a quarter of a million dollars. Quarter of a million dollars. We did not get the quarter of a million dollar return on investment. It was quite an impact. But it did have the ability to give the judges the tools necessary.
Judges love it.
And it did lighten your load at the jail.
It did, yeah. It took a little bit of time for us to start to see that, but it's somewhat. The unfortunate part of that is obviously, you know, we have to staff the jail no matter how many people are over there. Sometimes we can close down an area, and it does save us a little bit of money. But for the most part, we've seen, I think we've got 40 people that are on this program now. We can go up to, I think, 50 when we take it in-house. And at 50 people, they were going to charge us significantly more to be able to do that. So it's a reduction in our costs. So it's a benefit to our agency, and it's a benefit to the community and the judges.
Well, and well agreed, and it would be a little more efficient if it's done in-house. Will you have to look at any other equipment, devices, tracking?
Yeah. We've already been looking at that. There's a daily monitoring fee associated with that. We don't actually purchase it. You lease the equipment. Relatively inexpensive to be able to do that at the level that we're talking about with 50 people or less. We've already been given a presentation on that, and we feel that we can accomplish it under this year's budget.
And you stated without amendment?
Without an amendment, yeah, that's my plan.
Easy.
Okay. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Thank you. Sheriff, move staff's, sheriff's request and recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Vice Chair Irman. Anyone from the public wish to comment? See you none. All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero. And Sheriff, I believe that concludes all your items.
Thank you so much for your time today. You guys have a great day.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Dan.
Now move on to a public hearing, the Local Provider Participation Fund Asset Resolution. This is administrative in nature. And Dylan, you'll kick it off.
Yeah. So last year, the board established the Local Provider Participation Fund to assist our local hospitals in covering reimbursed, unreimbursed Medicaid expenses. Under the program, the county will assess three local hospitals. That with that money being, would then go to ACHA, and then that would be used to then bundle with money from the federal government. And the money, the funds would then come back to our local hospitals that provide Medicaid services. The proposed assessment this year is as follows. Cleveland Clinic at $2281,523, Encompass at $216,606, and Stewart Healthcare and Sebastian at $667,846. County Attorney's Office recommends that the board open up the public hearing, take any comments, and then approve the assessment resolution. County Attorney's Office also recommends that the board authorize either the county administrator or myself to execute the letter of agreement with ACHA as part of this program, and then any other documents that come up that are necessary to effectuate the assessment. One last note, I do want to state, and I did warn the proponents of this program, I was going to state this. I will note that last year, it was discovered that the program may potentially negatively impact the county's Medicaid reimbursement to the state. We were told that there were going to be proponents, that the proponents of this resolution and this assessment program would try to help create a fix in Tallahassee to the statute that would clarify that counties would not be negatively financially impacted by this. That did not occur last year. A lot happened during the last legislation, I understand. But certainly would hope that the folks who are coming forward and asking us to assist them in these unreimbursed Medicaid expense program, to assist us in Tallahassee to make sure that we aren't negatively financially impacted by this program. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair for the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Adams.
Have we been, or we just have, we might be?
We can, I don't believe that we would have been negatively impacted this year, and it doesn't appear that we were. But it seems like something that will, that could potentially happen in the future, and we would like for the legislative language to be clarified to that effect.
Okay.
Anyone else? With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? Good morning, welcome.
Good to see everyone again. It's always good to be in Indian River. Thank you for your time and for considering this item once again. We were pleased to see last year's program be a resounding success for the hospitals of Florida. So by virtue of this program, hospitals across Florida and here in Indian River were able to get more reimbursement for the Medicaid services they're providing to the vulnerable and the impoverished in the community. So that work, the partnership of the county, helped those hospitals continue their mission of care. So thank you for that. Regarding the issue that you raised, thank you for raising that. To provide some detail, in Florida's system of financing Medicaid, the state's share of dollars comes from a combination of general revenue dollars, which the state has in hand, and contributions... and contributions that they receive from each of the counties. That's every county across the state, not only the ones participating in this program. There was language that was not written with an intent that programs like this would increase the numerator, basically, which would affect how much each county had to contribute as part of kind of the state share for the Medicaid finance. So the, the language was not written with an intent to encompass something like this, which would grow the Medicaid budget, but there was ambiguity in the interpretation. So the wording was not precise. We started those conversations last year. The, the way that the finance works is that there are projections that happen in three-year cycles. So with that language untouched, that ambiguity wouldn't actually become an issue until, well, it would have been two years from when it was first built into the calculation. So last year, the message we received from the legislature was, this is a problem that won't actually become a problem for a few years. Come back to us when it's a problem. And so that was the messaging. You, you may have heard this before, but that was the messaging. So we, we began the conversations. We've emphasized to them, this is the year to make the change because it will have tangible consequences if it is not clear after this year. So that it is a top priority. We're partnering with the Association of Counties, also making sure that everyone understands it would be an impact not only for, for counties participating in this, but for even the small rural counties that have no hospitals if that ambiguity still remains.
And I'm welcome to assist you in that. I know we have Kathy who's just joined our team in, in assisting us in the next legislative session. So by all means, and we have a lobby team who is Anfield Consulting, who we'd be happy to coordinate with you on, and so that's my extent to you is, hey, we're willing to be there with you. So thank you.
Colleen, if you could give your name and affiliation, please?
Yes, yes, of course. Colleen Ernst with Adelanto Healthcare Ventures. We're a Medicaid finance consulting company that works with the hospitals of Florida. We're here with representatives from the Cleveland Clinic and from Stewart.
In regards to the potential impact of the county, if I remember correctly, last year, somewhere in the funding or reimbursement, there was a eight or ten percent administrative fee that could be withheld and, maybe, I don't know if I got it right, I thought that we were told that if we did have any impact, that that administrative fee could then help cover any shortages. Is that still true or correct, or?
My recollection of that was that we did address that through the administrative fee, but again, it's just nicer to have that issue resolved in Tallahassee, so.
Oh, no, I agree, but I just, so do we still have that kind of backup in this current agreement, or?
All we're doing here today is just doing the assessment resolution. The ordinance changes that happened last year are still within our code.
Okay, all right. So, okay. Any other questions for Colleen? Okay, thank you, Colleen. So anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Good morning, welcome. Give your name and address, please.
Ron Bierman, I'm the president at Sebastian River Medical Center, part of Stewart Healthcare. Holding aside the legal issues, and we'll let the attorneys deal with that, I really want to emphasize some of the financial issues that hospitals around the country are facing. I know that when we approached the commission a year ago, we talked about the Medicaid reimbursement concept, which falls short of covering costs. And we made an urgent plea and a desperate plea to get that additional funding, and we appreciate the fact that you agreed to help us. Whatever we said the issues were a year ago, I'd like to tell you a worse today. The impact of the COVID pandemic has really placed hospitals in dire straits. If you look at what's happening to hospitals around the country, they're faced with some very, very frustrating dynamics. Salary, wage, and benefit costs have skyrocketed. A lot of that had to do with the traveling concept of nurses who were receiving or charging hospitals as much as two-hundred dollars per hour. And so we face significant shortages, a tremendous escalation in overall salary, wage, and benefit cost. Then the inflation factor and supply chain issues that are prevalent now have really had an impact on our industry as well. So what we're faced with is salary, wage, and benefit costs trending up dramatically, and the cost of goods that we acquire trending up dramatically. And our ability to offset that by charging more doesn't exist. The Medicare rates remain the same. The Medicaid rates basically remain the same. We're bound by contractual arrangements that we have with other third-party payers. So right now, we're in a conundrum where we're looking at evaporating profit margins. It's estimated by the American College of Hospital Administrators that in 2022, the current calendar fiscal year we're in, as many as sixty percent of all hospitals nationwide could lose money. Hospital closures are starting to become more and more prevalent. Just in the last two weeks, we heard about a hospital on the west coast of Florida in Venice closing, part of the Community Health Systems Network of Hospitals. Community Health Systems in the second quarter lost three-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. We then heard about the closure of a safety net hospital in Atlanta, Georgia, Atlanta Medical Center, Level One Trauma Center that supports Grady, which is the county hospital. They're losing a hundred-and-thirty million dollars a year. And just over the weekend, I heard that another large inner-city hospital in Cleveland, Ohio, St. Vincent's, is closing. Again, the closure of those hospitals doesn't impact us directly, but it portends what's happening. What hospitals around the country are doing is looking at every service that we provide and making a tough decision. Can we continue to provide that service or not? At Sebastian River Medical Center, ten months ago, we made a tough decision to close our transitional care unit. And we felt it wouldn't really have an impact on this community because there were sufficient number of beds in Encompass, as well as other skilled nursing facilities in the county, so that patients would not do without that level of service. But that was a service line that represented a significant loss for us. Every hospital in the nation right now is looking at expense reduction and the potential closure of service lines that no longer hold their own financially. And although we want to do everything we can to support the communities we serve, it becomes an economic issue. And, and you know, again, I feel awkward begging, but the program affords us the opportunity to reduce the loss on every Medicaid patient that we're seeing. And you know, it was fascinating to me a few minutes ago to listen to some of the issues related to fentanyl drug use and just the overall increase that we're seeing amongst, well, every aspect, all age population. The number of patients that we see in the emergency room who are Baker-acted and Marchment-acted is continuing to escalate. And without the ability, without sufficient number of beds to appropriately care for those patients in the state of Florida, we're burdened withholding those patients in the emergency room for sometimes three and four days until we can find placement, adding to our overall cost. So again, I appreciate your support, and I certainly hope that from a legal perspective, we can work out the language difficulties and that you'll have a comfort level in re-upping this program for us for the next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Warren Fuller, Cleveland Clinic Hospital. I'm not sure I can add much to what Ron stated. I think he summarized it quite well. I would thank the Commissioners for creating this fund last year, so thank you. It went well, and it went as planned. As he mentioned, we're, the, in the current environment of inflation for labor and supplies is unsustainable with, you can't raise your price in healthcare. That's basically what occurs. You have a fixed rate, you get annual increases. So responding to these costs isn't as easy as it would be in another industry. So thank you very much. You know, despite experiencing this financial deficit, which continues, you know, Cleveland Clinic continues to invest in our community. In the last year since we've met and discussed this, we've brought maternal fetal medicine to the community. So that takes care of the sick babies. And there is a fair amount of those patients in this community that, that are in that category. In addition to that, we've added colorectal surgery, head and neck surgery, as well as SFP, throat surgery. So those are services that one would have, would have traveled for before. So I thank you for your support. I look forward to year two. And I'm open for any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none and having provided ample time. Commissioners, what I think we would need is a motion to approve the assessment resolution, and then to add the language issue to our legislative priorities.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Moss. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero.
And that motion encompassed the other parts of the staff report, recommendation concerning the authority to sign documents?
Yeah, the county administrator's authority to sign stuff, yeah. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Departmental matters, community development, amendments to the variance criteria and application fees. And here comes Phil with no marching band or nothing.
No fanfare. Phil Mattson, Community Development Director. And on August sixteenth, Commissioners, you had charged us with re-examining our variance process contained in 902.09. I'm not going to go through a long PowerPoint, but I'll leave this introduction slide here. So we've come back with three changes right out of the gate, and our first is a fee reduction. It was pointed out that it's very onerous to charge a thousand-dollar application fee for what might end up being a fairly small waiver that somebody's requesting. We agree. We still have to charge a fee. I mean, the legal advertising alone is three hundred bucks or so for each of these. So we're looking at a five-hundred-dollar fee for small-scale requests, and we're drawing the line between large scale and small scale based on, what is it? Is it commercial, or is it somebody's backyard amenity? And how big of a request are you requesting? Is it larger than twenty percent of the setback on the books, for instance? So that's our first cut at that, and that should be able, we should be able to do that very easily because that's, I don't think that requires the LDR public hearing process. Our second, de minimis setbacks, very strict, as you all pointed out, and I a hundred percent agree. Point five feet is on the books. That's six inches. I think we call it point five feet because it sounds bigger somehow, but nonetheless, we're looking at something ranging from a much larger setback than that, you know, something like a two-foot allowance in all cases, to a percentage allowance in all cases, which would make more sense. So we're going to be coming up with a couple of alternatives. And to this end, we're working with the county attorney. He's come up with a Jacksonville alternative. We have Rebecca Guerra, who has worked in quite a few jurisdictions before this. She's a new addition to our planning staff. She's the runner-up in the beautiful hat competition, sitting back there. And Rebecca's going to do, she's doing a comparative analysis of what other jurisdictions do by way of variances. What do they consider larger, small scale? What's the de minimis option that the staff can do without having to go to the board to put an applicant through a long process, or even charge them anything, so forth? So we're definitely going to come up with an alternative on the de minimis criteria. And then finally, variance criteria, we have very, very strict criteria here, and we've already went it down. We found, there are eight criteria on the books. Four of them, I think, are either redundant, or we can't understand, or kind of onerous. There's some aristocratic language sounding in here. No granting of special privileges, no harmony with the general purpose and intent of the county code, you know, and so forth. So we're going to, we're, we've already made some surgical changes there, and we're going to be presenting those soon. Fundamentally, I think the way to fix the variance process, I think, well, two things. One, background. So why do we have setbacks and so forth? The setbacks give people space. They prevent the obstruction of, you know, drainage, impediments to drainage, nuisances. We don't want to have loud uses very close to a neighbor unless that's the kind of neighborhood it is. So that's the fundamental reason we, we have setbacks in the first place. Then why do we have variances? You know, to make sure that those drainways go unimpeded, that the nuisances are, you know, minimized. So our neighborhoods are changing. We're seeing smaller lots. We're seeing larger houses on those smaller lots and so forth. So I think it's time we really evaluate not just the variance ordinance, but some of our setback provisions and so forth. Just to give you a quick example, a ten-by-ten, one-hundred-square-foot shed can go five feet from any property line. A ten-by-eleven shed has to be twenty-five feet or fifteen feet back. Why did we draw the line at that point? What are the sheds that people need these days? And would that extra one foot really bother anybody if we gave it the benefit of the doubt on the closer setbacks? So we're taking a look at the staff level. We're one of the really last jurisdictions that provides over-the-counter surface daily to anybody who wants to come to the planning department. You speak to a planner. I know of another jurisdiction, you mail in, you email your request, and you'll get a request within three days back. We also have, you know, live phone service. You can call our planner of the day. So we're polling everybody, and what are the sorts of things people are asking for? And then just kind of gauging the temperature of our population. You know, how close can my shed go? Twenty-five feet, fifteen feet on the side? Oh. You know, just getting an idea that, well, maybe there's something wrong with our land development regulation on our setback for that particular use. So I've kind of said a mouthful, but we're really taking a look at the LDRs to see what we can fix fundamentally in what we allow, open space allowances, minimum lot area allowances and so forth, and fence and shed and height restrictions. And probably going to come along with a few LDR amendments to that end as well to just head off any need for variance. So if that makes sense, kind of a mouthful?
Sounds good to me, Phil. Do you just need us to say, keep going, or?
Absolutely. And any ideas you have, or any, any suggestions for moving in that direction? And my staff's here taking notes.
Okay. I, you know, I've always, and one, I always say that you guys, you know, are doing your job when these things come up, and certainly your job is to follow our codes and our ordinances, and you all do a great job doing that. It's just sometimes I think you get to the point where we have to look at it a little bit more broader and not quite as focused with the binders as staff does. So I, and I have no problem taking on that responsibility and making those decisions. I think we're here to listen to the people and, and try to, you know, help people as much as we can. So I'm, I'm very happy to hear we're making some changes here, and you have my full support. So thank you for what you're all doing.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else has anything, or Commissioner Adams, I know you were vocal on this last time also.
I always have something to say. No, I really appreciate where you guys are going with this, Phil. I think the changes, as you've described them so far, are right on target. And my hope is that it gives you guys at a staff level some flexibility to address some of these things as well. Because I know sometimes you guys, your hands are kind of tied by it. But I like the direction that you're going. So yeah, keep up the good work is all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sheriff? Again, as we recently had to discuss a, an outdoor accoutrement or a shed. And in the past, we've had to discuss pool heaters, air conditioners. And as a growing community, as a growing county, with many changes and adjustments and different designs, I feel that this will be coming up more and more frequently, and I fully support staff to continue on. So what did you say? You need a motion to keep going?
I think a motion just for add a boy and keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. So any discussion? Anyone from the public? Mr. Paladin, good morning, welcome.
Antis beat Navy.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. I support what Phil said a hundred percent, and the rest is staff. I think they're working great together and working with us, members of the community, to do the right thing, and I really appreciate their help and their concern. So I support Phil a hundred percent.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Rebecca.
It is some hat.
I do like that hat, Rebecca. Go Knowles.
General Services, an updated draft Environmental Lands Program Guide for the November two thousand twenty-two Environmental Land Bond Referendum. Assistant County Administrator Mike Zito is going to kick this off, and welcome, team.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hang on, Mike, just. Oh, okay.
There you go.
Yeah, okay, or we'll just, we'll just move on to the next thing and, well, okay, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute break, and then swap it up. All right, so we'll take a break.
Oh, sorry, folks.
We were getting so much done so quickly, you know, we.
How to slow it down.
Want to, yeah, pull back the momentum.
Yuck or not.
No?
Get burned out.
I'm gonna utilize that break.
I just want to see the agenda item.
Somebody beat me toe.
Called the meeting back to order, and now we would go to General Services, the updated draft Environmental Lands Program Guide for the November 2022 Environmental Land Bond Referendum, and Mr. Zito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in March, the Commission initiated the process to develop a land bond referendum that will appear on the ballot this November. And after committing to that process, engaged staff to bring back a revised Environmental Lands Program Guide under which the structure, procedure, and voting and recommendation processes ultimately come to the board for approval of nominated parcels under the bond if it should pass. So we're trying to get out of the head of the vote, and in the event it is successful, be able to hit the ground running. And with that, you, as you recall, back in '92 and 2000, there was a process known as the LAC Committee, Land Acquisition Advisory Committee, advisory to the board, and that process served its purpose well in those days, but is a little too cumbersome and antiquated to apply to this process in the event that the referendum is successful. So with that, we met with supporters of the referendum, and Beth, and mostly Wendy, thank you for the heavy lifting on this endeavor. And with that, they'll present to you a framework for discussion and ultimately adoption down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. So as we always like to do, we like to start with the beginning, so I think it's helpful to do a refresher here. So in 1992, we had a $26 million Environmental Land Bond Referendum. This was the first referendum. We acquired a lot of properties under this referendum. Obviously, prices on property were less at that point in time. Because of the, because this was our first bond, we had not yet established a process by which the acquisition of properties would happen. So it ended up being about six years before about the first issuance was spent, which was $15 million. And during that process, the Environmental Lands Program Guide was developed, and also the mechanism for which you would rank properties. So that, the additional $11 million was issued in 2001. We made many other purchases during that time, and then in 2004, we issued the second referendum for $50 million. In those referendums, for instance, all of the program, all of the properties that we manage, sometimes in partnership with other agencies, so we don't directly manage everything, all of our, well, that's what we refer to as our Conservation Lands Program. So environmentally sensitive lands or Conservation Lands Program, they're a little bit interchangeable. We don't necessarily differentiate. We're acquiring environmentally sensitive land, but managing under the Conservation Lands Program. So just as a summary here, we have just under 12,000 acres that are permanently protected through the two bonds. These include acquisitions where we have partner, partners who either manage the property or help to acquire the property or both. Indian River County directly manages plus or minus 2,300 acres. Again, these numbers, we have other Conservation Lands that we manage that were not purchased through either of the two bonds, so there's a flexible number there depending on how far you want to drill down into it. And then we also have other acquisitions that are sort of cooperatively managed. We have 56, just over 5,600 acres that are managed through leases and management agreements, and then we have just over 36, excuse me, 3,700 acres that are conservation easements. So some of our notable bond acquisitions would include the Crangie and Lear properties. You would know this better as Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge, though it's not the actual, it's within the refuge, but these are properties that were acquired to buffer Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge. This, these were some of our first purchases. Indian River Lagoon Greenway, which at the time when we purchased it was called the Flynn Tract. Carson Platt Estate, which is a supplementation to the St. Sebastian River State Park, and that total park is 22,000 acres, and we helped to acquire about a quarter of the overall park area. North Sebastian Conservation Area, which is now roughly 500 acres. Oyster Bar Marsh Conservation Area, Lost Tree Islands Conservation Area, Sebastian Harbor Preserve, and Jones Pier. And obviously, this is not all of the properties, but these are some that are kind of in, you know, that we can highlight at this point in time because of the public access improvements that we're working on. So this is the actual Environmental Lands Bond Referendum question. The Resolution 2022-016 calls for the referendum election. That'll be on the November ballot. The main, the main question here is whether or not the citizens want to vote yes or no for or against monies to be allocated for the purpose of purchasing environmentally sensitive lands. During the last agenda item that our county administrator brought forth, we had direction from the board to the approval of the proposed resolution, which was completed. We also directed staff to update the Environmental Lands Program Guide prior to that referendum going out, and then to create the process to prioritize properties. That's embedded in the larger Environmental Lands Program Guide. So we've included a draft, and it's just important to remember that this is only a draft at this time. There's a process by which the Environmental Lands, the group, which we have called the panel, would be formalizing that and bringing it back to the board. But in all cases, the board is the one who's approving the guide and the process, and also the acquisition of the actual parcels. So those are brought to you for recommendations. So this updated Environmental Lands Program Guide, you can see it's about a 57-page document. It's to be used as the primary document. It contains the policies, standards, and procedures that are related to the acquisitions and also the management of the properties. And with respect to the guide, the board will always have the final approval authority on any decisions that are made. So we thought it might be helpful to quickly go through the summary. We've included this in the agenda item as well, but if at any times you have any questions or there's something in the guide that you would like us to elaborate on, we'll be happy to do that. I'm going to turn it over to Wendy, but basically, we're going to go through each of the chapters and just highlight the updates that were made. I will say this was a large endeavor. The original document was in WordPerfect, so the computer challenges were greater possibly or equal to some of the other actual changes that we were making, but we had to compile these documents that were created in 2003 into one newer cohesive document. And so that's a big part of what we were working on. So I'll turn over the summary to Wendy.
So as Beth mentioned, please interrupt at any point and ask us if you, we're just going to go through the chapters fairly quickly and provide you with some updates. Wanted to kind of caveat the whole discussion by mentioning that we did get in touch with many municipalities in the process to solicit their feedback. There's been a lot of local governments that have gone through this since 2004, and they were extremely helpful in providing information that really kind of helped provide relevant updates to the process. So as Beth mentioned, Chapter 1 is really about the process. It's introducing the guide and describing the overall process and outlining just the general policies and procedures. You want to go to the next slide? So in terms of updates, a lot of administrative updates to this chapter. We looked at a lot of the definitions that were in 2004. Some of the agencies have changed. For instance, the role of SETT in the process has changed a bit. Some of the definitions themselves changed relative to regulatory citations, chapter citations in the legislature. And also, some of the cost share funding entities were updated. We did delete some definitions where they weren't appropriate anymore, and then we added some definitions. For example, the Florida Wildlife Corridor was not really a consideration back in 2004. We modified the objectives to reflect the current resolution. In other words, I don't believe the water resources were really highlighted or the lagoon, and we also took out cultural resources. That was not a focus for this current resolution. And then we updated the management goals. So as far as Chapter 2 goes, really, like Beth mentioned, it was some changes to, we had quite a bit of lively discussion on what to rename this panel. I will say Phil Mattson is very, very helpful with that. He had some great ideas, but we finally settled on the ELAP, which is the Environmental Lands Acquisition Panel. So really, Chapter 2 is just a little bit of a reworking of outlining the composition of the panel, their terms of office, and some of their responsibilities.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Since we're on it now with the panel. It's, for the community, there'll be nine people on it. Each of us on county commission will appoint someone, and then there'll be four members at large. My question is regarding two members at large will have professional credentials in natural resources? Is that, could you explain what that is exactly?
Sure. You know, when you're trying to, and I have to, I was not part of the original back in 2004. I was not working for the county, but my understanding from the LAC is that the goal was to try and get a broad brush of expertise so that when you're reviewing these parcels, you have people that are reviewing the information that can make informed decisions based on their past experience. So having two of the natural resources folks, because it is an environmental bond, would be, you know, obviously extremely helpful to have people with an ecological background or some other related natural resources background. To interpret, a lot of the rules have changed since 2004. We have a lot more focus on things like climate change and resiliency, natural resources, all of that is very interwoven with that.
So what would their training be, though? I mean, for natural resources?
You could be a geologist, you could be a biologist, you could be, you know, pretty much anything related to the natural sciences is what we're looking for.
Thank you.
And Wendy, just to follow it up, when it says professional credentials. So a degree in biology, I wouldn't call that a professional credential. I mean, that would be an academic credential.
Yeah, I think that the way that we interpreted that mostly was work experience. I mean, you really, it's like all of us. When I first got out of college, I had a degree in biology, but I can confess I didn't know much about what I was doing. So, you know, having that time and actually working in the field to understand. In particular, when you do environmental review, having, you know, a rather diverse background and looking at all aspects of it, I mean, you can be very focused and be the best expert on entomology, but that may not help you relative to other aspects that need to be considered. So having a good broad background in natural resources is kind of what we're, you know, you guys are obviously picking these people, we're just providing some guidance.
I'm all for that, but maybe we should say a broad background and experience instead of professional credentials.
Okay, these are, that's why we're here today, is to get your.
As an example, it's been a while, but I spent 13 years tramping through the salt marshes on Lagoon when I worked for the mosquito control. when I worked for the mosquito control. So I would have considered myself very knowledgeable about what was going on in those lagoons. But I don't think I had any kind of professional credential. But I've had a lot of, you know, hands-on experience. So, you know, if you want to leave the professional credentials, fine. But maybe put in a or broad background and experience. There's something.
That's a great.
That doesn't tie us into, hey, you know, where's your professional degree? Well, I don't know.
No, I totally, I think that's a great comment. We should broaden that, so we'll do that. Anybody else have any other questions on that? Okay. And like Beth said, keep in mind that this is a draft of this document. So certainly, should the bond go through, then there would be an opportunity for all of this to be rereviewed.
And then, other than the five commissioner appointees, other than requiring them to reside in our respective district, there's no qualification restrictions on that? Or at least, I don't see that written in here at this point, so.
But that's not currently in here, but it could be a consideration. They could need, you know, they could be a resident of Indian River County, because that's not specified. By default, it is for the five. Yeah, for the districts it is, but I don't think that we have that in for the other four members.
Yeah, we left those more broadly open was the thought, because there's five individual ones. And once you're limiting it to the district, it could be harder to do. But we could do something to say that each of the individual commissioner appointments would need to have one of the natural resources, real estate finance, planning or engineering, or something like that, if you wanted to provide a little more limitation, but up to the board.
I, well, let me think on that.
Okay.
Okay, so Chapter 3 really talks about environmental resource protection methods. With some of the folks that we talked to in developing the guide, there was some concern that some of the issues that were in 2004 really weren't relevant to the current guide process. So with the help of staff and the county attorney, we kind of pared down this section to include really relevant protection methods, such as, you know, fee simple purchase or donation, and kind of eliminated some of those others that just didn't seem relevant at this point.
I just had a question on the installment sale. It says that it's not approved for use in Indian River County. So you're including this just as a matter of defining terms?
Exactly, like the condemnation, yes. That was, those are like, how could you acquire land? But some of those, obviously, like you're pointing out, are not relevant to this process.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I mean, we're not approving installments?
No, no, no. We're just, I think the, keep in mind that Roland DeBois did the original guide, and he did a phenomenal job. He was extremely thorough. And so a lot of these considerations were very helpful to staff in guiding this. But the overall part of Chapter 3 was just to say, here are opportunities of how you can do this, but not applicable to this process, all of them.
Okay, thank you.
There's some opportunity to provide some clarification. So under the installment sale, I kind of see what the point here might be, that we would say these, we would define the things that we're not pursuing, the measures we're not pursuing as a separate, instead of it being lumped together. So we'll make a note of that, look at some changes on that.
Okay, so Chapter 4 really talks about funding and financing. As you know, you often see Beth and myself in front of you with grants and other opportunities that we have to leverage funding in this process. So there are the direct funding measures that are presented in here, which is just related solely to the acquisition, but also financing alternatives and methods for you to leverage funding down the line. As Beth pointed out on the first slide that she showed you, the bond was only, you know, X amount of dollars. But in the end, we acquired quite a bit more through leveraging that funding. So some of the funding sources have changed over time, so that was included in the update. And then there were additional funding sources. Once again, the Florida Wildlife Corridor is an FDEP measure to encourage and incentivize acquiring lands. So these are all things that we've outlined to, for consideration, so that the public can understand that part of the process.
I was very impressed by the number of funding opportunities.
There are, there are.
And thank you for stating within this that certain of these funding agencies already have been involved in partnerships with us on different projects. I appreciated that information as well. Do you know, and you don't have to answer right now, but I'd be curious, with regard to the previous bonds, what, how much of it was leveraged? I mean, what kind of monies came, you know, came forward from partnerships as a result of the previous bonds? I'm not asking you to project on this one, and you don't have to answer at this minute. I'd just be interested to know at some point. Thank you.
I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head. Jason looks like he might. But I know that if we go back to that first slide, it gives a total number. So let me just flip back really quick.
138 million.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
138 million, and then the bonds were, let's see, if I've got it on the.
So I think we nearly doubled the dollars. Almost, almost all of the purchases had a matching grant from Florida Forever or some other partnership, FCT, and going through these processes. So we were able to leverage those. There has been some change in those funding type availabilities over the years, but we're back in a little bit better place. For a while, there weren't many dollars available in some of these programs, but fortunately, there are some. So we do anticipate leveraging these dollars to the best of our ability.
Well, that's certainly a wonderful track record.
I think if you want to get the exact number, we probably need to tease through the list, because there are some things that Beth and I were looking at. So I didn't want to throw a number out that was fixed. I think we might need to tease through, but it should be close to that.
138 million was what was acquired. And then if you back the bond, the bond.
76 million.
Yeah, then you would have the, but we have it in more detail, and we have it for every single parcel that we purchase as well. So it depends on what level of detail you would like. We can bring those numbers back to you.
Okay, that's great, very impressive. Thank you.
Well, and certainly DEP has put out so many more opportunities for funding that just didn't exist in 2004 related to all of the infrastructure and sustainability and resiliency. So it would be something for staff to pursue. So Chapter 5 is really what is probably the longest chapter in the guide. And it's really a step-by-step overview, and they're referred to as phases in the guide, to take a parcel from initial nomination all the way through purchase. It is a rather lengthy section. The updates to that really were driven by changes that have occurred since 2004. We have had a lot of changes, like I mentioned, in the agency stuff and the funding, but also the environmental criteria. I mean, the resolution called for specific things to consider that were not considered in 2004. And also, as I mentioned, just the general environmental community has shifted a lot since 2004 to focus on water resources and other aspects of the environment that weren't really a high focus at that point. So with that, we had an awful lot of updates to this chapter. Can kind of go through, and please, like you've been doing, stop if there's specific questions. But, you know, the chapter starts out with updating the process for review. A parcel is nominated. As I mentioned in here later on in the slides, we updated the nomination form to make it much simpler. That's what most of the other municipalities seem to have followed that path. A lot of the information about these parcels, the baseline information that you would consider in review is available on GIS and other media. So staff would be able to fill in those gaps and make it a little less burdensome on the public for nominating. The original form was much longer. The evaluation matrix was updated to reflect both the current resolution as well as, like I've been discussing, the current parameters and priorities relative to environmental lands protection. Things like biodiversity are a lot more focused at this point than they may have been. I think they were referenced in 2004, but not as much highlighted. And it's also updating the section to reflect, as I'm mentioning, sustainability, resiliency, wildlife corridors, all these things that were discussed in 2004, but perhaps, you know, not as much in depth as they are considered in a lot of the discussions that go on today.
Just Wendy, if I could on that.
Uh huh, sure.
Very last page, last two pages, you have the evaluation matrix and then the minimum criteria for property review. I'm good with the evaluation matrix and the scoring there. But on the minimum criteria, okay with A, B, and D. But C says a property supports endangered, threatened, or species of special concern, regardless of parcel size. And I, not that I don't think any of these are important, but sometimes, you know, if you're going to buy a half acre, realistically, the chances of that being a successful project are probably slim to none. I just, I remember in 2006, when I was running, is when the Sams project was coming through, and there was a public hearing and discussion on the parking lot. And it turns out that in the Walmart parking lot, some of the parking islands were supposed to have this endangered species on it, which was now long gone. And so, yeah, I don't want to spend a million bucks on a quarter acre knowing that its chance of survivability is zero. I mean, just.
Sure.
So I don't, I'm not really sure what we should do in there. I think just maybe think on it right now, that the project has to be big enough that there's a realistic chance that it'll survive, is basically kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, let me maybe give a little clarification on that. This, that review is what I call the first sieve with the biggest holes. I mean, that's just like looking at, or maybe it's the smallest holes, maybe I reversed that. I think the minimum parcel size is five acres.
Right.
And a lot of these are and/or type evaluations. And the goal would be for staff to go through that very initial screening just to see, does this even merit consideration? That's really the goal of that. And that language that you see in there was actually pretty much taken straight from the 2004 guide, certainly open to any changes and amendments that you want to make. But for example, like the Sebastian Scrub parcel that the county acquired was 10 acres, but that has scrub jays on it. And it was a corridor to the state park for scrub jays. And we've had a really successful use of that for that. So totally agree with what you're saying in terms of habitat fragmentation and whether or not things would make sense. But just wanted to clarify that this was kind of like the broad sieve in the beginning. This wasn't, if it makes it through here, then it would actually be considered is kind of where that, what that means.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if we're going to preserve something, it's going to be.
Makes sense.
Survive, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
When you get to the matrix, just to clarify too, one of the matrices, one of the indices in the matrix does specifically describe that in terms of management, restrictions on management fragmentation, the ability for, all of that would be very scrutinized in terms of consideration.
Thank you.
So we also removed the references to cultural resources, because that was not included in this resolution as it was in the prior ones. Modified the language to add the discussion a little bit more broadly in terms of land management and public use improvements. And then instead of strictly having a ranked system, one to 50, for example, staff put in there, after some discussion, maybe it would be more productive to have a tiered system. So you would have like tier one, tier two, tier three. Properties would be pursued in tier one with less of a focus on an actual numeric designation, so that didn't drive, in other words, one process wouldn't hold up another at that point, because you would be looking at it simultaneously, just for consideration. Just thought it was maybe a more productive way of doing that. And finishing up for Chapter 6 is land management. Really, the changes in this section were really driven more by how does the Conservation Lands Program actively manage properties now? How would that reflect relative to the prior guide? And updating it to make it so that it made more sense in terms of our actual staffing and our procedures and what resources we have available. So as you mentioned, we did update the appendices. The comprehensive plan that was used in the 2004 guide was the 2020 plan. So there were a lot of updates in terms of strictly just taking that language straight out of the 2030 comp plan and including it for the public to understand and consider. A lot of the mentions in the guide do reference the conservation element of the 2030 comp plan, so that's why this is included as an appendix. We discussed modifying the application nomination form and the evaluation table and the newly structured Environmental Lands Acquisition Panel. And I think with that, we are through with our updates. If you have any other questions.
Commissioners, any further comments? Wendy, as you, or Beth mentioned, I think this is a pretty big project to get it all converted and updated. So thank you very much for your efforts on this.
Thank you.
I think you heard my comments as we were going, so look forward to seeing the final draft. Anything else you need from the board?
Do we need, Jason, just so we understand, where do we go from here?
Yeah, I think we'd like to get an approval of this as a draft. You know, you could, we could incorporate the changes that we've, the change exists.
Okay, so, you know, a motion to approve the draft plan, incorporating some of the comments of, as you've heard, and then come back to us with the final version? Okay? Anybody want to own that?
I'll move to approve the draft.
Okay, I'll second the motions. On a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by myself, to approve the draft Environmental Lands Program Guide and direct staff to take consideration of some of the comments and come back with a final version.
And just for clarification, I think what we see this is as kind of a living document as well. We have contemplated that there could be some future changes to this once the ELAP is seated. So one of the things we're thinking, we'll get the panel seated. There may be some additional final revisions. So we're kind of thinking that of this as maybe like a final draft for before the election, which was something that we need to do for transparency sake. It was required in the ordinance to make sure that we're telling the public kind of, here's the process that we're going to use. But we don't want to have that handcuff us and say we can never make any changes. So we have contemplated, and we've worked with the environmental community on this as well, that there may be some minor, you know, changes as we go. But we think those ELAP members will add value and possibly make some potential changes to this once that.
I don't think it's the board's intention to make this in concrete and never change it, so.
Just wanted to clarify that.
We're all concurrent on that. Okay, all right, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any comment from the public? And good morning again.
Morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joseph Paladin. I'm chairman of the Land Use Committee of the RNA. I'm also vice president of the executive board, and that's how I'm speaking right now. We support moving forward with this draft, and I support staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, did you, okay, good. Good morning, welcome, Ken.
Good morning, Ken Gruden's Indian River Land Trust. I just want to commend Beth, Wendy, Jason, and Dylan and the time they've taken to go through this document, let alone change it from WordPerfect, and to, you know, to reach out to the environmental community, as Joe mentioned, to obtain our comments and have some really good conversations around it. And I think it is important, to Jason's point, that there's transparency in this. And I think putting this out, you know, to the public and having it available as voters begin to look at their ballots and think about the importance of this referendum. I appreciate the work that went into it. I know there's a lot going on at the county, especially in the Parks Department. So, you know, once again, the, you know, representing that environmental community that's involved with this discussion, we do support the draft document and look forward to any nuances and working with the county and the staff to, you know, do any fine tuning that might be necessary. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify. I'm sorry, Commissioner Fletcher.
I just want to say that I appreciate the great work that this staff is doing. As you know, that I have not been supportive of the Environmental Lands Bond in the past due to our economic conditions, the climate that we are enduring right now, perhaps in the future, but not at this time. And I need to be consistent with my thought process. My no way is it a reflection on this staff of their hard work in trying to make this a better place, knowing that we have over 25% of our land dedicated to environmental conservation. And in doing so, in reviewing. And in doing so, in reviewing many of the projects, there is still work to be done on the current projects that exist. There is a lot of effort that has to be done before we look at more land to purchase, to protect, to preserve, when we have not done our commitment to preserve, protect, maintain, and develop, if that's appropriate word to use, in the conservation arena. When we purchase land, we're committed to the public that we're going to ensure that the land is in conservation and well-preserved. And we have a lot of work to be done, and I believe that staff is behind the eight ball in having to be able to accomplish that with the current resources they have, with the current tools they have. And I can't, again, continue to support the purchase of additional land when we still have a lot of work to be done at the home front. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Fletcher opposed. Thank you, Beth, Wendy, Mike. Public Works, the Shoreline Performance Modeling, the Aptim Work Order Number 2008-008-04, tabled from September 13, 2022. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. Eric Cheris, Natural Resource Manager in Public Works Department. Thank you. As you had mentioned, we are here for the tabled item from last week, which is the Shoreline Performance Modeling. I do have a few slides here to give a basic understanding as to why we're at this point and how we got here, so just bear with me. Any questions, feel free to give a shout out as we get to those, so. Just for a background, a technical advisory committee is a means primarily for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to assemble a group of stakeholders or, or technical experts representing stakeholders to hear information and come up with a recommendation for the DEP to provide. In the instance for the Sebastian Inlet Technical Advisory Committee, the recommendation from the DEP will go to update the inlet, district's inlet management plan. There's a little bit of an explanation here. An inlet management plan is a plan based on, or created by the inlet that will define certain elements to offset impacts of an inlet, such as a sand bypass rate, areas of influence, as well as sources of supplemental sand should the need arise. That's, in a nutshell, what the technical advisory committee is, as well as what the inlet management plan is. We're here because in 2000, the DEP convened a technical review committee that established certain requirements for the inlet management plan, or certain recommendations for the inlet management plan. In that 2000 adoption, the inlet management plan for the Sebastian Inlet identified a sand bypass objective of 70,000 cubic yards per year. That was based on the information available at the time, and again, we're getting back to the year 2000 for the implementation of the plan. They did identify certain items that was, they needed more information in order to provide a more educated answer. That would be like the inlet's area of influence, as well as what some potential long-term impacts are for the inlet. The technical review committee that adopted this plan led to a technical, the first technical advisory committee, which was convened in the 2004, 2005 timeframe. An update out of that 2004, 2005 technical advisory committee resulted in an update to the inlet management plan's bypassing objective from 70,000 cubic yards a year to 90,000 cubic yards a year. That was written in the minutes from the 2008 update. We're here for the, the current TAC was assembled in December of 2021 through the DEP and the inlet districts' efforts of trying to provide an update to the inlet management plan. Again, the inlet management plan was established in 2000 and updated in 2008, and here we are, 2021. The plans ideally look at, you know, an update in a somewhat routine timeframe, you know, but again, based on the, the way the inlet's managed and so, not managed, based on the way the inlet's acting and so forth, they can extend those durations and such. So here we are, you know, 2021, looking to update the 2008 requirements, so. The idea behind this current TAC would be to evaluate the contemporary effects of the inlet, and again, coming from a 2008 timeframe to 2021, we've had several years pass, so the contemporary effects would be, you know, more current now, so. The TAC is comprised of, as I mentioned, technical experts, we have DEP representatives, we have the Sebastian Inlet District, local governments with jurisdiction adjacent to the inlet, which would be Indian River County and Brevard County, as well as local stakeholders represented by their technical experts. The staff brought before the county commission here back in the November timeframe a request for Work Order 2018-008-3 with our consultant, Aptim Environmental and Infrastructure, to provide us the technical assistance necessary to act accordingly on this TAC. That was approved, and again, and Aptim has been supporting us in the TAC effort. The, I had a couple slides, I switched around a little bit, but we have, since, the TAC was convened in the December timeframe with our first meeting in January, this, this first TAC meeting, when it was convened, the intent of the TAC is to have four meetings with a goal of having a recommendation come out of the fourth meeting that the DEP will go back and use as, in an approach to update the inlet management plan. So that's, that's where we have, we've been through three meetings so far. These are kind of an overview of the, the meetings themselves. The first meeting was held in January 26th. Basically, at that meeting, it was an understanding or just an education on what the TAC was formed for, the charge of the TAC, what we're, what's to be expected, what's to be presented, and so forth. And out of that, the TAC charge was to define and evaluate the contemporary effects of the inlet, the actual area of influence of the inlet, the, an update, potential update to the sediment bypass budget, which is a sand bypassing, shoreline conditions, as well as sand bypass, bypass placement areas. TAC meeting number two took place probably about six months later, so we're in June at this point. You know, the information that's presented at each, at each TAC meeting does take a significant amount of time to review and then prepare for the next TAC. So there, you know, we do see a lot of time in between these, but it's to be expected based on the volumes of data that's being reviewed. At this second TAC meeting, there were several presentations from the inlet district's technical advisory committee chair, as well as from other experts in the, in the field. We did discuss sea level rise, basically the Gulf Stream, weather patterns, tide and storm surges. All of these items, we are aware, have an effect on the erosion, downstream erosion that we're seeing along the beaches along the East Coast. Those are all items that are addressed. One of the items of, of importance here is the inlet district does have an area of responsibility, you know, to, to monitor, which is 30,000 feet north and 30,000 feet south of the inlet. And they do acknowledge that any data outside of that 30,000-feet range is not evaluated in their studies. You know, there's been different thoughts as to where sand missing, you know, could be theoretically sand missing in the budget, it potentially could be moving further offshore. Several discussions have been taking place as to where the depth of closure is and what happens during some of these movements of sand. The inlet is bypassing more sand than it's retaining, and the sediment budget has been determined to be, to be identifying a timeframe between like 2007 and 2021. Again, the last TAC with a sediment budget was formed and was established in 2008 using considerably older data, so we are looking to use more freak, more, more recent data in order to determine a sand bypass. At the end of that TAC meeting number two, Indian River County was tasked to assess and determine the area of, the inlet's area of influence. So we left that TAC meeting number two with some homework items on our end beyond, above and beyond what our items were. At that, the end of that TAC meeting, the county staff did bring before an amendment to the work order we have with Aptim, which included running additional models to determine an area of influence. So that was one of the items we brought, and we brought back that before the board to get approval on that. TAC meeting number three took place just recently here in August, and what that did there is we actually reviewed the information that was provided from the county's consultant, Aptim, on a potential area of influence or an area of effect that we might be seeing from the inlet. There was presentations on, on the county side, as well as on the inlet district's side, on the, the areas that potentially are seeing a, a potential to, an influence of the inlet. The, there's been, these are just some, some highlighted items from the minutes here. Modeling questions were discussed. There's several room of several engineers, several different approaches, but yet there was a consensus that, you know, no matter which way you really look at the models and interpret it, it's going to give us about the same answer at the end, being interpolation versus other approaches at modeling, so. There is acknowledgement that erosion does occur within sectors one and two, and some of the data that was presented by the counties does appear that there is an influence into sector three. At the end of this TAC meeting, considering we're supposed to have four TAC meetings, at the end of it, the goal was to go into the fourth TAC meeting with ideas as to where everyone stands, so that we can have a discussion to say, this is what needs to be done, or this is what recommendations that should, the DEP should consider in moving the plan forward. Nobody has come to the table with an actual sand budget estimate, so at the end of the third TAC meeting, based on the information we had available to us at that time, the county came forth and said, you know, we're tossing out there 95,000 cubic yards per year as a potential bypass number as a talking point, just to kind of go on the record of saying, where do we think we are? This next TAC meeting, number four, which should be the last one, really kind of should come to a, you know, an agreement. We also don't want to be, at the, at the meeting, we don't want to have new data presented to us to evaluate, we want to at least go on, on the record here saying that this is the kind of way we feel we should be.
But that's a number that you tossed out? It's not based on anything?
It is, it is based on, it there, it's based on the, you know, basically, yeah, I'm sorry. It is based on the assumption of the 90,000 per cubic yard bypassing rate that the, that the inlet district has in their current inlet management plan with the ongoing erosion that we're seeing downstream.
So it's just a number that you plucked out of the air based on the 90,000, and you upped it because you've seen other erosion?
Pretty much at this point, as a talking point, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Rich Berry, Polk Works Director. I'm the one that put the 95,000 cubic yards out there as, as a member of the TAC. The reason being, the inlet district's looking at 51,000 cubic yards of bypass right now. We've got other entities spouting 140,000 cubic yards. There's a lot of numbers flying around. So in order to move the TAC forward, I looked at the, the numbers that were there, and I came up with a happy meeting. Nobody objected to it. Nobody said really a whole lot about it, it's just a number that we need to look at. So that's where we started, just trying to move the TAC forward, like Eric said, TAC meeting number four, we want to be done, we want to be done so we can get DEP and agree to a number, and DEP can do what they got to do. So the number wasn't really plucked out of the air, so to speak, it was just a, a number in between what we're seeing on the inlet district's side, what others are saying, and a number that we're actually comfortable with.
But I think it's important to point out that it's not based on data.
Okay. This slide here was, I mentioned this a little early in the presentation, but this is actually coming from the, the DEP's annual report on the state of the inlets. They actually, last year, started their reporting to show where the inlet stand with their bypass, with their objectives and so forth. So this actually, this page here came from the second year, which was just released this past August, to show what the inlet district management plan says for their bypassing. Again, you'll see in 2000, it was set at 70,000 yards, and in 2008, it was updated to 90,000 cubic yards. Below that, you do see, they were looking at a 21-year period of time, basically from the inception of the management plan in 2000 through to 2021, we are looking at what the inlet district has bypassed. They bypassed a little over 1.1 million cubic yards of sand in that timeframe, and their cumulative objective, based on the DEP's numbers here, which is bypassed sand, would be 1.82 million cubic yards. So it does show that there is a, you know, apparent deficit of about 700,000 cubic yards of sand within that 21-year period of time. This is just another slide from that annual report. Like I say, this is just something that the DEP presents. The dashed line shows the goal. The green line does show the cumulative addition of sand. The blue bars are nourishment projects performed by the inlet district, and the gold bar is going to be the annual objective. The, the 2011 nourishment event was one in which the inlet district did provide funding to the county for the nourishment of that. So the, the 300,000 cubic yards is one that was performed by the county but funded by the inlet district. I do want to go back and say that in 2000, the, the 2005 TAC, one of the items that came out of that was a memorandum of understanding agreement that, between the county and the inlet district that we've been operating under. That memorandum of understanding does identify placement areas for sand bypass, and should the district move more than that they couldn't fit in a template, we've identified areas to the south that they can place sand. There's a lot of other items in that, but there is an agreement that came out of that that we've been operating under, so. In that TAC meeting number three, we did, as, as we discussed, we did come up with a 95,000 cubic yard sand bypass rate that we are targeting, and in order to further support that number, what the county was looking for was Work Order 2018-008-4 with Aptim to further model a shoreline performance effort here for the county. That's what we had brought back before the board last week. We're on a timeframe such that with our last TAC being scheduled, probably in the second week, second or third week in December, our goal is to have the data available to all the TAC participants to review and disseminate out probably within the, the middle of November at the latest. This modeling effort does take a considerable amount of time, so we are looking at, you know, approximately, you know, five to eight weeks for a modeling effort. That includes calibration, updating all of the information going into the model, as well as running the model on several different scenarios, which puts us back to this timeframe that we're bringing it before the board now to seek approval. So again, we're not, we don't have much in that way of time to play with on this based on this, the anticipated schedule of the fourth TAC. This fourth TAC has not yet been scheduled, but it's anticipated that it will take place before the end of the year as targeted by the DEP. So, staff was told at that last week's meeting to bring this item before the county's Beach and Shore Preservation Advisory Committee and seek their input on it. We did do that yesterday, but again, I'll just hit this slide first. Just to kind of highlight also, the previous beach performance modeling was done in the 2015 Beach Preservation Plan, and that plan, and that model did use data that ranged from the 2002 to 2004 timeframe for, for offshore transport, as well as survey data up through 2014. We are looking to have a more current model run now, which would include data from the 2010 through 2021 timeframe. The model that we're looking at having run is a DELF 3D model, which is commonly used model in the industry, taking into account numerous aspects above and beyond just survey data. We're looking at, you know, waves, storm, erosion, friction, there's a whole litany, I have a slide of, of some of the specifics on that if anybody wants to see any of that, but it is, it is a much more in-depth model than just putting a survey data in there and running. It is the same model that was performed for the county back in the 2015 Beach Preservation Plan by the consultant, which is what is giving us a, a cost break, if you would, on this current model. As you can see here, the model will give us the outputs, that'll be presented in a technical memorandum that would be prevented, presented to the TAC members in advance of the next TAC member, member meeting. The model scenarios, we feel would provide us with the information to, for the county to support TAC recommendations. This cost from the consultant is not to exceed $41,940, and for the model, this model, if they had to start from the scratch and not base it off of our 2015 model with the cells already defined and update that information, this model would be anywhere in the range from 120 to $150,000. So we are getting a significant discount on the model for the fact that they've already got the ground rules for it, we're just looking to update the inputs and then run it, calibrate it, and run it, so. As, as said, our recommendation, our request for the board, we do support the effort here. We did bring this before the Beach and Shore Preservation Advisory Committee yesterday at a regularly scheduled meeting, and the Preservation Advisory Committee did vote to support staff's request in moving this modeling effort forward. support staff's request in moving this modeling effort forward. I think that's pretty much what I have. Do you have any?
Okay. Commissioner Adams, any comments?
Oh, I have lots of comments, but I'll wait to hear from everybody else.
Eric, can you go back to the summary of the TAC three meeting, please? So, being a glutton for punishments, I got the, the minute meetings from that and actually read through the, the minutes. Couple things came to mind, you know, how we say that if you put 10 attorneys in a room and ask them a question, you're going to get 10 different answers. And having read the minutes, I can tell you, you put six coastal engineers in a room and give a model, you're going to get six different opinions of what the model says, and then you're going to get six different opinions on why that wasn't a good model or why their model should be used and not that one, and on and on and on it went. So, the only real concern I have with this is if we do this updated model, is it something that all members, and, you know, reading the minutes, there's one side here and one side there, are all members of the TAC going to concur with whatever the results of the model show? And, and how much individual interpretation will coastal engineers apply to those results of the model?
You're right. I mean, every, every model will be open for discussion. The DELF 3D model is an industry standard. I mean, it is a standard that is used. It is different than what the inlet district's modeling is, is used, but it is an industry standard one. I mean, the DEP is intimately familiar with it, as well as many, many coastal engineers. What the data will show at the end of that, it is, I mean, everyone's aware with the inputs and outputs from it. So, again, it, it will lead itself to individual, you know, assumptions or determinations coming off of that, but it is the industry standard.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate this coming back up, and the Beach and Shores Committee appreciate it. They probably debated this for like an hour and a half yesterday in, in regards to this. They asked a lot of good questions. There were, there was some confusion, but I think that confusion was cleared up. And I think it's important to know that they, that they, they did their job as they asked and, and did a really, really good job of it. They voted in favor to do this. I, I would recommend that we vote in favor to do this for a couple of reasons. My first is, there's some more questions to be answered beyond this model, and this model may help us answer some of those questions about where the sand go, how does, how much is being bypassed, who should pay, who should be responsible, what we need to do, and how we need to do it. And, and I, and I, I, I do hate to tell you that, that we need to spend 41,000 to, to get some of those answers. It, it, it makes, it's very hard, but, but I, I think this is something that we need to do to move ahead, to get some of these questions answered and, and steer staff and, in the direction that we need to go, and some questions that in the future need to be asked and even, and even answered by the, by everyone involved with this, whether it's Sebastian Inlet, the DEP, us and the rest of them. This, this may very well help us do that, even though it, 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 like Ms. Chairman said, there, there could be different opinions, but I think this is at least a, a median, a starting point where everybody can look at it and then say, okay, this is, this looks good, this looks good, this is what we need to do, this is maybe what we don't need to do. So, I, I, I would, I would move that, move staff recommendations based on this will help us find some answers and ask important questions that need to come up later.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Irman, second by Commissioner Flesher, under discussion. Commissioner Adams?
Yes. Okay, you guys know where I stand. I made it very clear last meeting, and nothing for me has changed since then. I am concerned that the slide at the end, you know, indicates that the model is going to be used to support the 95,000 cubic yards of sand that we've already noted is not based on data. So, you know, you can manipulate a model with inputs and outputs to get the outputs that you want. So, I guess my question is, what inputs and data sets and who are those coming from are you using for this model?
We have a tremendous amount of data sets for that. That's one of the benefits of this. Where the inlet district's surveys stop at 30,000 feet south of the inlet, the county picks up, we do the entire county. So, we have surveys that date back 2000 and, oh, 2016, starting the semi-annual survey. So, we've got a broad history of those, as well as surveys prior to that. We have other entities on the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee. Yesterday did offer to augment even some of the surveys that the county has, where they actually do surveys on, we'll do it on every 1,000-foot R monument. They do it in a more, you know, more like 250-foot or, or they'll do it at 500-foot increments within their area. So, they're willing to share that data with us as well. So, we have a, a lot of data being pulled into the study. Some of the data is even available from the inlet district. Through our memorandum of understanding, we do share survey data with them. So, we're using some of their data, some of our data.
But you don't want, my understanding from our last conversations on this is that you don't trust the inlet district's numbers, so that's part of the reason you want to go through this modeling effort.
I don't think we even, we don't trust their numbers. We actually want to view and actually, and, and see the data ourselves as well, using our models. Because again, the inlet district's models are a different modeling that they're using, as opposed to the, the, the standard DELF 3D. And we would like to just use the DELF 3D, which actually does take into account many more factors than what their model is.
So, the inlet district is its own independent agency taxing district, correct?
I...
Correct. Yes. They're, they're an independent special.
So, at the end of the day, if there, if, if the numbers that DEP or if we have a disagreement over these numbers, what do we plan to do about that?
The goal of this TAC is to update the inlet management plan.
Their inlet management plan, not our inlet management.
Nothing to do with us. We are a stakeholder in it, and per the requirements of a TAC, as a local government entity with an in bordering adjacent to the inlet, we are in the TAC committee.
So, again, if we don't like what comes out of the TAC committee and we don't agree with it, what are, what do we plan to do?
The, well, that, that's, that's going to be a, a DEP stance at that point there. If there is no, no consensus on a recommendation to move forward, then this will go to the next level in the DEP, whether that's a...
No, no. I mean, if DEP gives a recommendation, DEP gives a number, right? That's what's going to come out of this ultimately. And we don't agree on that number, we don't accept that number because it doesn't meet our modeling, what do we do then?
So, so I would say we're participating in this process to, to be part of the, the TAC process to determine that. In my mind, you know, there's clearly different parties that believe one thing and different parties that believe another. I think our role in this all along is to be independent and just look at the data. And that's, that's why this work order, look at the data. You know, in my mind, I'm not afraid of the data. It's, 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 we want to get the data so we can help make a determination. And, and so, in my mind, I think we're, we, we follow. I, I believe we don't really have a, have a fight with, with, if, if DEP says this is the deal, then, then in my mind, my recommendation would be we, we would follow that. And, and just to add on, I mean, my question is, you know, we can talk, the, the current plans, it was previously 70,000 cubic yards and now it's 90,000 cubic yards. We're getting 51,000. So, that, to me, that's, is, is that 51,000 enough? I think the inlet district believes it is. There are other parties that believe it's not. And in my mind, this, this operation is to try to figure out, is what the inlet district is doing, is, is it working? And, and in my mind, it's just, we're going to, we're going to be, be, be delivered with, with a data set and we'll, we'll follow what, whatever the data set says and, and live with the, with the, with the, with the TAC result.
So, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that whatever comes out of the TAC, we are going to accept?
I, I don't, I don't see a need to, to challenge that. We're, again, we're not taking sides here. We're just looking, we were invited as a stakeholder. I think we have the interest of county residents, Indian River County residents. I know that the district has, it covers Brevard, a portion of Brevard and a portion of Indian River County, so they have a different constituency. Our constituency is Indian River County. And I think what we just want to do is, is what the inlet district's doing sufficient? And if, if the data shows that it is, then I think we're good.
All right. Well, I'm going to hold you to that because I don't think that's where this is going. I think we're going to get ourselves in a lawsuit, and it's going to be adversarial. That's where it's going. That's where the other stakeholders are going with this. I don't want to have anything to do with it, quite frankly, and I think that the consultant is taking advantage with this work order. I don't think it should cost that much. I know you said that we're getting a discount. I don't believe that. So, you know, I'm a no on this, but you guys knew that coming into this. So, that's where I stand. I feel very strongly about this because I just, I don't like where we're going. I don't like the undertones, and I, I just, I don't, we're in a very bad spot, in my opinion.
My, our goal is not to be in an adversarial position with any, either of the parties. We're just looking, just, just the facts. We want to see what the facts are, and, and I believe that the DEP process will, will lead us to a reasonable place that probably neither party will be completely happy with, would be my guess. But, you know, so, I, I don't, I don't, I certainly don't feel like the county will be engaging in litigation on this in the future. That's, that's certainly not in my plans.
Okay. All right. We do have a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that. We do have a motion on the floor. Is anyone from the public wish to speak to the motion?
Good afternoon. James Gray, Sebastian Inlet District.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. And again, we've enjoyed the partnership with the county as far as management needs, implementing our bypassing program, as well as the county implementing their beach nourishment program. I did want to just mention, I know there was a lot of question about data and this additional monitoring that, modeling that is going on, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention as well as the public. The district has been monitoring the shoreline ever since the last 2005 and prior TAC committee meetings. For the last 2007 to 2021, actually 22 data we're starting to collect, we've done semi-annual surveys of the shoreline 30,000 feet north and 30,000 feet south of the inlet, which Eric identified one of the talking points in his presentation. But do, in doing so, we've conducted and calculated a sediment budget, which calculates, which is a requirement of the statutes, to determine what a bypassing objective is or should be, based on the available data, topographic data in this case, and also wind and wave data. And it also identifies an area of inlet influence, at least based on that data. Again, and not talking against the proposed additional work that, that is before you today, but as a result of the TAC committee, in fact, TAC committee two, there was a discussion as far as extending the sediment budget, the analysis of the sediment budget. So, that 30,000 feet that I just identified, extending that further into Indian River County, that was actually done. The district's presented 51,000 feet south of the inlet, based on the topographic data that was collected by the district, as well as topographic data that was available, collected by the, the county. So, my point here is, for this presentation, is there is a lot of data that is available currently, that's been collected by the county and also by the district. And we also summarize all of this data in a technical document annually through a state of the inlet report. So, a sediment budget essentially, although formalized, discussed in 2005 with the TAC meeting number, or the second TAC that DEP established, we annually update a sediment budget and have been doing so since 2007 to present. So, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention as well, and the public, that we do have a significant amount of data available, and I just ask that, that data also be considered going forward with the county.
Thank you, James. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up. It is afternoon, so good afternoon. Your name and address, please.
4187 West 16th Square. Very simple question. I just wanted to know, they were using feet. What is that in miles? So, the 30,000 feet, what would the extent of that be? And then later, I heard 100,000 feet. I'm just trying to figure out the area.
Okay, well...
30,000 feet's about five and a half miles.
It's, it's 5,260 feet in a mile, right?
About five and a half miles for 30.
So, 5.7 miles.
Okay. Thank you.
My math is correct. Okay. Anyone else? All right. So, we do have a motion by Vice Chair Irman, second by Commissioner Flesher. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
We, motion carries four to one with Commissioner Adams opposed. Commissioner Adams, you know, in the dispute between the Town of Indian River Shores and City of Vera about the service territory disagreement, we have taken a policy stance that we will be neutral on that and that we will abide whatever the judge decides. From what Jason was saying, I think we're in a very similar position that whatever the final outcome from DEP is on the, the number, that the county intends to abide by that number. If you would like to make a motion that you think that as a policy decision, we should formally accept what DEP says, and I think that way we can at least kind of codify it into a policy decision.
Well, I would be happy to make, I would be happy to make the motion that irregardless of what comes out of DEP, we are not getting into a lawsuit. I don't know where this, I mean, I don't, I have, to be completely honest with you, I have very little trust with this process and those involved in this process and where it's going. There's a lot of underlying things that is involved in this that is beyond what is being presented at the TAC committee or here. So, I would prefer our policies to stay as far away as possible from the whole issue, to be honest. So, I don't know, while I would support where you're going with this, because I have a distrust of this process and what has been presented so far and what will be presented moving forward, I'm not, I'm not sure if that is inappropriate at this time. Does that make sense? Like, I'm not, I'm not trying to say I don't want to do it, but at the same time, I have such distrust for this whole process.
And Commissioner, I would just throwing it out there for your consideration, but I, I think, you know, as a policy that I don't think we want to, and what Jason said, we don't want to initiate a legal challenge to whatever DEP says. Now, I agree, I think there will be a lawsuit, and we may get dragged into it, just kind of like what happened with the water and sewer thing, we kind of get dragged in. But I don't think it's our intent to initiate any type of legal challenge when DEP comes out with the final number.
And I've heard that, and I've heard Jason say that, so if, if...
You comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, and if anything happens otherwise, I will just cue up this video and replay it.
And, 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 yeah, and I'll say it more, more clearly, I, I don't foresee us, you know, wanting to get engaged in any legal dispute. There very well may be some kind of legal dispute between different parties here. I can tell you right here, I don't recommend that we get involved in that.
I would agree.
Okay. All right. Eric, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. That takes us to county attorney matters, the construction board of adjustment and appeals member appointment, Mr. Rheingold.
Thank you very much. We have a vacancy on the construction board of adjustment and appeals. Cindy Dixon had submitted her resignation on August 1st as a member, member of the general public on the board. Simply have an application. County attorney recommends that the board consider the application to fill the vacancy. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Dylan. Commissioners?
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Flesher.
I move appointment of Catherine Cassano Rodecky.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Moss. Anyone from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Putting on our special district hats, the Solid Waste Disposal District, the landfill... Putting on our special district hats, the Solid Waste Disposal District, the landfill fence project. Commissioners, anybody ready to move on this, or do we want to hear?
I think a motion for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams. I will second that. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Right.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Change order number two to agreement with biogas engineering for a high-pressure skid system.
Ms. Chairman, I move staff recommendations, but I would really like Huma Chu to come to the microphones, just so the people on TV that could see his costume.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a...
I, I, I think Huma Chu should do one podium facing one direction and go to the other podium facing the other direction.
There's one more item, so we can have them switch.
All right, so we do have a motion by Vice Chair Irman, second by Commissioner Adams. Huma Chu, would you like to give us a 10-second summary of the project here? Just enough to get you on TV. There you go.
For the record, I'm Huma Chu, the managing director of the Solid Waste Disposal District. I appreciate the board's support of this project. We're doing everything we can to get ready for the renewable natural gas projects. Thank you.
You know, I almost see an above and beyond award coming up here.
Thank you.
All right, my, motion by Vice Chair Irman, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. And the final item, amendment number one, the Payment Processing Services Statement of Work Agreement with N Court LLC.
Move.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. That concludes our agenda. I want to thank everybody, and particularly Huma Chu, for participating in College Game Day and helping celebrate my birthday. It was a wonderful day. And just a reminder that tomorrow at 5:01 PM is our final budget hearing here in the chambers.
Ms. Chair.
Commissioner Fleischer.
I, I, once again, Huma Chu, you did go above and beyond. I realize that you have the Peter O'Brien above and beyond, and, but I see a Susan O'Brien in the audience? And I saw a big smile because I think that requires the baking of a...
Klon pie, yeah, or something.
Okay. If it does transpire, I wonder if it could be a two-tone pie as well.
All right, and with that, we stand adjourned.
That takes the cake. And the pie.